I'll call the meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the whole to order. Will the clerk please call the roll when you're ready?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
I don't believe we had any minutes to approve. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, next we have public input and presentations. We'll go with public input first. If you wish to address the committee of the whole, please step to the mic. You'll have four minutes. Is there any electronic correspondence that needs to be read? Grace, go ahead.
Thank you. I had a few emails that were sent in to be read aloud. This one is from Pastor Angel Johnson. She says, hello, my name is Pastor Angel Johnson. I'm vice president of Angels Youth Center. We were turned down for a grant that just went out on April 4th, 2022. Our organization is in good standing with the state of Illinois as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I spoke with Mr. Bleacher and from my understanding, we were denied the grant because the request was too much. Furthermore, he stated that they never provide funding to open new businesses. I said, okay, that's fine, but since this is a grant, can you reconsider but not change my amount? Or but don't change my amount. Mr. Bleacher stated he changed the amount of our request, but he said no to both requests of $2,000 and $5,000. I pleaded for the demand for $2,000 to $5,000, but he refused. So after close observation of the recent reports, I noticed an organization requesting $80,000. How is it possible for those organizations but not ours? In addition, Mr. Belcher states Angels Youth Center sent a 2020 Illinois Charitable Organization Annual Report Form. However, we sent Mr. Bleacher an annual report from 1-1, 2021 to 12-31, 2021. Our organization requests a meeting with our ward representative and Mr. Belcher to discuss our concerns and figure out why Angels Youth Center was turned down from funding. Mr. Bleacher has turned down every request and we would like answers because other organizations are receiving their request amount. Angels Youth Center would like to volunteer to help Urbana schools. The youth and their teachers need more help. We want to offer our mom and pop programs for the children and the parents. I know we all have been impacted worldwide by what's going on in our schools and with the youth and SROs. Now it's time to let us in to help out. And then I have another one. This other one is from Julia Guth, I believe, G-U-T-H. Dear older person, Wilkin, it's my understanding that several of our Urbana City Council members met with students of Urbana High School during the last week of school to listen to their concerns regarding gun violence in our schools and community. Thank you sincerely to those members who took the time to listen to the voices of our Urbana youth. As you know, I have written you directly several times as my older person to document serious incidents of gun violence in our ward, as well as the impact of violence has had on our children, in addition to those who attend Urbana School District 116. Thank you for reading my correspondence openly to the council and I ask you to do so again this evening. Ironically, while you're reading my communications aloud at the council in the fall months, I could hear sounds of gunshots in our ward. In fact, council member Jaya Colacetti commented on one of those occasions that she could also hear gunshots from the city chambers. Among the numerous incidents of horrific gun violence in your ward, you may recall the two-year-old who was shot as a result of a drive-by shooting while inside the home in April last year, and the 17-year-old who was shot and killed as a result of local gang violence more recently in December. Before you voice your opinion on the SRO intergovernmental agreement this evening, I would like you to respectfully ask for answers to the following questions. In fact, to underscore your oath to the residents of Urbana, I urge you to respond to these questions on public record when reading this document aloud this evening. Your answers will signal to your constituents whether you have done due diligence and service to your ward. Did you accept the recent invitation to meet with Urbana High School students and tour the school two weeks ago? Have you specifically met with and asked Urbana High School and middle school students from your ward their feedback regarding gun violence in our community? Have you surveyed Urbana School District 116 families in Ward 6 to assess their concerns regarding the impact of local gun violence on Urbana schools? Do you have children involved, enrolled at Urbana Middle School or High School? Or have you set foot in either school within the past year? As your constituent, I am writing to urge you to vote yes to the intergovernmental SRO agreement understudy this evening. The lives of our Urbana students are in your hands. With appreciation of your service, Julia Guth, City of Urbana resident.
Any other electronic correspondence? Jaya?
Got a few. Make sure I have the right one. So the first one is states, my name is Brandy McCoy, Urbana resident. I want to applaud the number of agenda items that represent youth services. $100,000 is a lot of money and those programs have the potential to have a positive impact on many young people in our community and their families. I'm looking forward to hearing the budget presentation today, although I do have questions about other sections of the budget that aren't on the agenda for today. No surprise, I'm sure UPD. At first glance, the proposed police budget is a smaller percentage of the general fund than it was last year, 13% versus the 18% from FY 2021-2022. But even though the police did not use $3 million of the 12 million that were budgeted to them last year, we're still adding an additional 200K to their budget. Don't understand why this would be even in years prior to FY 2022. Police Department haven't used more than $11.5 million in 2020 or 2021. Can we take some of that 200K, or being optimistic, the extra million on top, and add that to the amount of youth services we're investing in and encourage even more young people to our infrastructure plans? The SWIFT program, where else could we budget those dollars to bring positive change to Urbana? Next one I have says, dear Urbana City Council members, we are strongly against the proposed resolution authorizing the school resource officer program intergovernmental agreement between the city and Urbana School District. It would be irresponsible of the city council to approve this because, one, the resolution lacks accountability to the Urbana School District, and, two, it is not supported by data that shows SRO presence improves relationships or reduces crime. There is no national or local research that, research, excuse me, that give viability to the presence of SROs in schools. We can question the SRO program goals and why we are spending money on policing our students rather than counselors, social workers, or psychologists to provide necessary support. We cannot continue to throw police at school problems. Please vote no to this resolution. Thank you, Janice Sheer and Joanna Fraser, USD parents. Apologize for mispronouncing names. And then I have one? Sorry, one more. And I think most of these came to all city council, but they're the ones that have been asked to be read for public input. Dear Mayor Marlin, the city clerk, and council members, I'm the former senior class president of Urbana High School and a recent graduate. Over the course of Officer Chad's time at UHS, I would regularly speak with my peers as well as teachers about student safety and how we could build a safer environment. After careful consideration, I urge you to vote to support our SRO, Chad Burnett, as he has proven to create an important and positive impact on our school's overall safety, which is what our community desperately needs at this time. I hope that you prioritize the safety of our students on the top of your priority list. Thank you for your time, Myra Stevens.
Is there any other electronic input? Nope. Okay. Anyone else would like to speak to the committee of the whole? You have five minutes. Please state your name for the record.
All right, thank you. Name is Al Max Axelrod. Counters at four minutes currently, but I'm speaking to you in several capacities tonight. One is as the campaign lead of No Amish Shutoffs. Again, a $0 all volunteer coalition of 53-member organizations spanning the state and adjacent states. BA4 and BA5. If you've not heard of those subvariants yet, you will. Yet more contagious, yet again. And if you're looking at the COVID caseloads in Illinois, it hasn't decreased substantially. It's flatlined. We are about to have the outcome of the Memorial Day travel impact our communities. So I want to first thank all the council members who are wearing masks. I wish the city of Champaign would do the same thing. The consequences of what's going to happen are hard for some people to understand. So if this is repetitive, please forgive me. Ameren Illinois is increasing their electric rates 50% this month. The Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program 2, which has restricted eligibility requirements, again, that's $80 million that goes to households who have received a utility subsidy this year. And unlike the last year's program that decreased our COVID caseload, this one has not decreased our COVID caseload. It's only kept deaths down. It's better than nothing. That program ends at the end of July. Just like Ameren's voluntary subsidy programs that they also have ends in July. Is there anything that begins in August? No. The lie heap season, Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program season, starts in September. Where we have an elevated caseload, where we've been over 4,000 cases a day in terms of the seven-day average for well over a month. This is not good. This is conditions that can lead to exponential growth, like has happened in New Jersey, where my grandmother just caught COVID. So when it comes to the different policies that you can push for, again, urge the governor to expand the eligibility program of the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program 2, to increase the duration of that program, and if the measures merit it, more money for that program in lieu light of the increased rates that Ameren Illinois is imposing on their consumers, despite the fact that they still have a forecast increase in their profits per share for this upcoming quarterly report for quarter two, financial 2020. I also wanted to mention how, when I was looking at the Urbana City Council agenda, I've been working with at-risk youth in this community who are definitely involved in organized crime, which not enough people even talk about existing in our community. Where we don't talk about the fact when you don't pay their parents enough, they're on the streets fighting for subminimum wages and dying. When I told that kid what was going to happen at the city council tonight, he looked at me and said, we need space in school. The whole problem with having school resource officers, again, if you want to watch the John Oliver shtick where he says that it doesn't prevent violent crime in schools in a statistically significant level, is that if you ignore the economics of it, you're resting your way out of a societal systemic issue. It's really not that hard to understand. If the parent is working too many jobs, if there isn't adequate support for disabled parents, what do you think their kids are going to do? Are they going to say, well, I guess I'll starve tonight? No.
Please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Hi, I'm Michael Turner. I'm in Urbana, and I'm just here as a black student to say that I'm in full support of our SRO. And as I walk around my school, I see students with the same militant skin as me. And they have, we have positive interactions. And I just think that it's very presumptuous and it's very stereotypical to say that there are African-American students who don't like the SRO or don't feel comfortable with the SRO. Because not only are those of us who have trauma and predicaments that we have to go home to, that he's always there to help us, but it's what he's doing at the school. And I don't know, maybe it's because of this African-American community and police dichotomy that we see on the headlines every other week that makes us believe that black students don't want the SRO. But I'm just here to say that that is false because I am a black student and I am full support of our SRO. That's all I needed to say. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm gonna state my name. I don't need a mic. My name is Stephanie Price Hammond. I have been a dean. I have been a student interventionist. I have been a choral music teacher. I have been everything to every child in Urbana since 2004. I have been in Urbana High School when we've had SROs, but they didn't feel that they wanted to be a part of the community of being in Urbana High School. They wore their badge as a police officer of Urbana and used that in the building against all students, African-Americans, white, and others. But this young man, I can say young because I know how old I am. This young man, I have seen Mr. Burnett. I don't call him officer because I just, he's around so much. He's like part of the system of being at Urbana. It's like a family. These kids talk about family and how it feels to come to school. And you see him every day in the hallways. He takes kids home. He brings lunches, takes home food to the kids who can't get to the school to get lunches. Or, you know, the meals that we have, they can't get there, so he does it. He's not a person like who uses who he is against any of the kids in Urbana. He is for every student, and I have physically seen it. He is there. He's there when I myself have been like, where's Mr. Burnett? Maybe he can help. He never takes the full front. He always stays in the back. He's a good listener. He's a good educator. He helps everyone. So for us to go through this, do we need a SRO? How many days, how many years do we need to keep going through the same thing? Yes, we do. Yes, we do need Officer Chad Burnett at, in Urbana High School. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the committee of the whole?
Good evening, good evening, everybody in the room today. So I'm a fresh principal, Nancy, proud principal of Urbana High School. And I say proud principal because I am. And so I've been in six school districts across Maryland, Delaware, Virginia, Pennsylvania. And there's never been a SRO debate until I got to Urbana. And then I came here understanding that the gun violence was a big part of the community, unfortunately. And so we've been talking about this for the past three months. I've given a thousand different talking points about my personal, professional, political, all the angles about why I believe we should have SRO. And the first thing I thought about was Urbana High School is everybody's school. We have one high school in Urbana. So regardless if you have kids who graduated or no longer at Urbana, that is still Urbana High School. The Urbana pride that I feel in the community, everybody's school is Urbana High School. And so Mr. Cooper and I are getting ready to embark on our school year. And we have 21 kids, 2,100 kids that we have to protect. And we have to make sure that when they come to school at 7:30, 8 o'clock, that the families get their kids home all in one piece. And so Officer Burnett is a piece of the puzzle that is central to my operation and to my psyche and to what I'm able to do because I know my building is safe as I try to restore and heal our community from years and years of trauma. And I say our community because I believe black and orange. And so for me to sit here as a black man who has negative lived experiences from a white police officer on several occasions, for me to have to unlearn what I was taught in my community about white people in general, for me to have to unlearn the fact that, you know, Officer Chad, I can't see him as just a white officer. I have to look into his heart. I have to connect with him on a personal level because of the trauma I face. For all of our black students in the roundtable with Councilman Evans, telling him specifically, we want Officer Chad. We want Chad. To have all those things take place and for me personally to still feel like we haven't done enough, I'm like, this is y'all's school. You've been here for years. And if I'm taking on the burden of 1,200 kids, my first year in Urbana High School, wearing the flag, waving the flag for every constituent in this room today, I'm telling you what I need. And so if I'm telling you directly, everyone in this room, what I need as the high school principal of Urbana High School, and we still at some point end up going in a different way, then I have to question what we're really here for. Because if we're truly about keeping kids safe and educated and their psychological well-being and their mental health, and all those things we talk about every single day, well, I'm telling you, everyone in this room, I've been championing Officer Chad. Before I met him, I'm continuing to champion him because he is integral to our entire operation. And I have, I had a student that was able to come tonight because he had to work. So I'm gonna read the text message that he sent me about Officer Chad. Wait one second. Mr. Burnett, he is an awesome person. He cares. He also helps people in need like me. For example, I have real-life issues and he helped me. That's how I got the results I got as a junior because he changed my perspective on police officers. I'm from the city of Chicago and we know we don't like police officers. But Officer Burnett is not that. Notice I don't call him Officer Burnett. I call him Burnett because that's how much respect I have for him. But there's one more thing about him that you don't know. He's family, and let's not forget that. It's the you, baby. So that's what the student said. And so as I close tonight, I'm gonna reiterate, I'm the principal of 1,200 kids, and this is everybody's kids, everybody's school. I need Chad. And I plan on being here for a lot of years. So I don't want to walk into my school and not have Officer Chad there. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the committee of the whole?
I had to bring my thoughts on paper because I can get long-winded. My name's Sorrie Exum. I'm an Urbana resident living in Ward 3. I'm a parent of two Urbana High School grads and a current Urbana High School student. I'm also a Urbana School Board member, and I'm here in support of our SRO program. If you had asked me prior to my children entering the secondary level of education, I likely would have been sitting here arguing against police officers. We are not taught in our African-American homes that police are people that you can trust. Some of our experiences with one bad police officer have led to generations of believing that one bad apple is coming from a bunch of bad apples with police officers. We hear about police in the schools and on the news, and we generalize them to be the standard in all of our buildings. What we're seeing on the news, just kind of in our minds, becomes general. Some of these officers that we see are not trained to be in schools at all. They're simply police officers doing police work and investigating in the school building. Well, I'm here to tell you, Urbana is different. Our building is not a beat that our police officers are working. They're not there to criminalize our kids and arrest them. We clearly in Urbana have done something different, from the police department hiring the right officers to making the selection of the right officers for our schools. It's important because these individuals are building relationships, educating, teaching, and most importantly, preventing. Do we occasionally have to arrest a kid in our school? Absolutely, we do, and that's an unfortunate situation, but it's very, very rare. Why am I in support? Well, there are several reasons, and I don't have very much time, so I can't go through all of them with you today. But in a nutshell, one of the most important pieces here is building of relationships in an effort to prevent the adjudication in the court system of our kids and to reduce the risk of harm to those within our schools. I visit the schools regularly and have done so since well before I was a board member years ago. With the current SRO, something that I see that's pretty unique is that they are in support of our SRO. That's not something that's very common that you see with young black children, that they're in support of a police officer. With an SRO in the school, we have a chance to control who we have dealing with our kids. Is it gonna be an officer who's trained to work with kids, who knows our kids? Who can de-escalate our children? Who can calm them down and talk to them? That most likely will not lead to an arrest. But if we have to call in a police officer, police officers on the streets, they're there to come and solve a problem that we have within the school. And in a lot of cases, that leads to arrests. By removing the SRO from the building, you could potentially end up increasing the chances of Urbana being a school-to-prison pipeline, if you just think about that. Something that we clearly have not had from the last decade, if you look at the information that we had. I've heard a few times people who argue that our dollars are better spent hiring more mental health and trauma-trained staff. And I've never understood why we have to have one or the other. We certainly have mental health professionals, and I'm gonna be honest with you. We've always been looking for additional mental health professionals, and they're not beating our doors down to come work in our positions. But we don't have to have one or the other because both puzzle pieces are important. They do different things. And honestly, are we saying that our mental health people are the only ones that can deter our children from the juvenile system? Are we planning to have them break up a fight between the two parents, like the one that broke out in front of our school building? What about the parent who came and wanted to pull a kid off of the school bus to fight them? Is that what our mental health professionals are gonna do? Are they gonna stop those situations? Or the uncle who came and wanted to jump on a kid whose house later that night was actually shot up? Who was gonna meet him at the door? So there's a level of protection here as well. I hope that those who rely on data and stats know that there are simply things that make a difference that you cannot measure when it comes to an SRO. There's not even metrics when you're talking about a life potentially saved. And I can tell you, our high school SRO, I know for a fact, saved a life this summer. He may not have even known that, just from his mere presence and conversation. The combination of kids coming in schools who potentially may not come with a gun today because we have an SRO and we have a police officer within the school. I commend those who were able to go to the school to speak to youth that were open-minded enough to say, while my education tells me one thing, I'm gonna see for myself and make a decision. If you see that there is no harm being done to the kids, if the kids are telling you it's a good thing, that they help within the school, I hope that you would trust those in this space daily and vote in support of our SRO. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to give comment during this public input time?
I've had some more to read. This one is from Cynthia J. Coleman. Dear Urbana City Council members, I'm writing to you as a 1989 alum of Urbana Schools and a current parent of an Urbana High School student. I fully support retaining the SRO program at Urbana schools. My children have been in the school system since kindergarten. My oldest just graduated and my youngest is rising junior at Urbana High School. We all support this resource in our schools and hope to see it continue. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you need further details on this feedback. I have another one from Sherri Langendorf. Hello, city council members. I'm expressing my support of continuing having school resource officers in the schools. Just as their title implies, these highly qualified educators are there to be a resource to the students, staff, administrators, parents, and guardians. I know of situations where students were having difficulties outside of school and needed intervention. Because a school resource officer recognized a particular student from school and was aware of his unique learning needs, the student was able to get the appropriate assistance. The situation could have been inappropriately addressed if an officer who didn't know the student were to intervene. School resource officers are a part of a team to support students and families when they do not know who to turn to. We must support students, teachers, and administrators with these highly qualified educators. It has been years since I have been in the schools. I made this decision to support the school staff, students, and administrators. They know what support they need in the schools to address current issues. Sherri Langendorf, parent of Urbana High School graduate, retired adult education teacher, community member. And I have one more. From LaShonda Cunningham. It's my understanding of this SROs is once again on the meeting agenda for further discussion. I am humbly writing to you again in support of school resource officers. As an African-American parent of recent Urbana High School student, graduates, and family members currently attending schools in the Urbana School District, it is imperative that the council understands the importance and greater need of school resource officers. Two of my own children were impacted by bullying through middle school and one during the first year of high school. As a result of the lack of resources available during that time to, and to the present, I asked questions, advocated, and pushed for policy changes to be made. There are constant conversations regarding school psychologists, social workers, and more. However, we are not afforded school psychologists and social workers who are trained to handle hostile situations or having a good understanding of how to intervene in such situations that would help to minimize effects of bullying whatsoever. We did not have any prevention or intervention services that would support nor reassure active parents, such as myself and my husband, that our children would be in a safe environment, and there were no school resource officers hired to assist with these types of bullying. and there were no school resource officers hired to assist with these types of bullying incidents. Our son was afraid, did not want to go to school, stabbed with pencils, scissors, sucker punch daily, teased, and other details. In addition, our oldest daughter was bullied. And our daughter, these aggressive acts above bullying lessened with school resource officers, was voted upon to be in the school districts. Though our kids had to go through extensive therapy for years, that was a result of being bullied, should we hold school officials and counselor members accountable for all students who have been victimized by bullying aggressors? I find it interesting that many of the decision-makers in this process do not have children that attend the district currently or had children that attended the district years ago. Recent studies have showed how school resource officers are beneficial to have employed in schools. While their roles go deeper than just being employed, many foster and build relationships with the kids and their families. Officer Burnett and Robinson have done an amazing job with the kids. The officers know the kids and their families and have built a good rapport with them. While I am not sure what statistics some of the general audience are going by, however, I will say, after completing and defending my own dissertation that includes bullying and intervention and prevention programs that should be included in these types of programs, school resource officers align with the study. I ask that you step out of your comfort zone, visit the schools, spend time with some of the kids in all the schools, instead of listening to hearsay from individuals that have no interaction with the school district whatsoever, including those who politically judge and make decisions without seeking to understand or have lived experiences to share. In the wake of all the recent shootings at schools, churches, supermarkets, random, and hospitals, why do we continue to sit here and brainstorm about the need of school resource officers when teachers, administrators teach to live in fear of not having the protection they deserve? I'll leave this question for you to ponder. How many minutes were you willing to wait for officers to respond to a call and arrive on the scene with multiple fatalities, then having trained school resource officers in the building who can initiate contact in many more ways prior to their fellow officers from all agencies arriving on the scene? Appreciating you taking the time to read my note regarding this topic on the agenda of this evening's City Council meeting. Regards, Dr. LaShonda Cunningham.
Okay, if there's no more public input, we'll move on to budget presentations.
I do have one more.
Okay, Sherri, go ahead.
That was, I was just waiting. Dear Urbana City Council members, I am writing to you as a 1989 alum of Urbana Schools and a current parent of a Urbana High School student. I fully support retaining the SRO program. Oh, I don't think. From Cynthia Coleman?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I wasn't, I wasn't sure if it was the same one, okay.
Did I meet the deadline? I'll be brief because I've never attended a City Council meeting, and I have to sit through the school board meeting, so I understand that public comment can be draining, and so I will be brief. My name is Angie Franklin, I'm an Urbana resident, I'm also a parent and a staff member of the school district. I just wanted to, for you to have a name with a face, I'm the one that invited you to come to the school to speak with students and staff, not to speak with me. I understand my privilege as a white woman in our community, and that's why I'm here for, to say to you, for you to make an informed decision. That's why I invited you to speak with our students. And almost every person on the council replied to my email, and many people went and met with students, which I applaud your efforts. Unfortunately, we don't have everybody that, that does that kind of thing, so I appreciate you taking the time to do that, to make an informed decision. The last thing that I wanted to say, serving in both Champaign-Urbana Public Schools, the difference between the SR, the SRO program between Champaign-Urbana is that I've seen so much more local control in Urbana, that if our school resource officers are not what we need, because Chad and Michelle are not gonna be around forever, right? So we have to think more about the program than the people. I feel very confident that there are so many people watching their every move, that if they are not the right fit, or if this program's not the, the right fit, people from the school district and the city will be back here to tell you otherwise. And that's something I think is very special and unique to Urbana, and something to consider. If I were Chad or Michelle, I wouldn't want this job because of how many people are watching their every move. Every move with students, every move with staff, with people in the community. And something that I've witnessed, both Chad and Michelle do, but more recently and more often with Chad, is watching parents come up to the school, and Tori and a couple other people spoke to it, but I witnessed it. I watched Chad de-escalate two parents that were gonna fight each other in front of maybe ten kids. And this was in the morning, this wasn't at dismissal. This, this year was rough, it was really hard for kids and families, and they came up with really heightened feelings. I did not hear Chad raise his voice, he calmly, he knew the parents. From whatever reason, he was able to de-escalate them and say to them, you don't wanna do this in front of your kids, let's walk away. And this, and the parents walked away. And school administrators like me, if I go to Urbana Middle School or Urbana High School to report to a, a call like that, the parents don't know who I am, they don't know that I'm a staff member, they don't know that I'm an administrator, and really doesn't matter. But they knew him, he had built a relationship with them. And that's very important for our, for our families, for our communities, to be able to attract new families into our communities, and for people choosing public education. Public education is, reflects the world we live in, the beautiful diversity, and we don't wanna lose students and families to the private sector in any, any capacity. So thank you for doing your due diligence, and I look forward to the vote. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Amari Johnson, I'm a current student at Urbana High School. I don't really have anything prepared, I just wanna say I'm in full support of the SRO in our school. I know as a black girl, sometimes you can feel threatened by authority, and I in no way feel threatened by Officer Burnett. He actually makes me and my friends feel a lot more comfortable going to school. And I think if it was anybody else, we wouldn't feel as comfortable. And I think with what's going on in the world right now, we definitely need him, and this would be like the worst time possible to get rid of him. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sheldon Turner. I am a graduate from Urbana High School. So I wanna say that I am in full support of keeping the SRO, Mr. Burnett. Me personally, I see him every morning when, you know, because we just got our metal detectors at the school, so he takes my Chromebook. And every morning I see him, especially when we got the chance to have mask or no mask. He had a smile every morning, greeted everybody who came through, and he gives no reason to any student to make them feel any kind of uncomfort. So I'm not gonna say too much, but I'm just gonna say that from my experience in the four years that I've been there, he has definitely made a huge impact from when I first started and from when now that I'm finishing. So I am in full support.
Last call. Okay, moving on to budget presentations.
I'll start off with a few remarks and then turn it over to Carol, Ally, and Elizabeth. June is budget month, budget season in the city of Urbana, and the fiscal year 2023 budget reflects the mayor council's strategic priorities and goals, maintains city services, and addresses some critical public facility needs. Over the past, next slide, the, over the past few months, the council worked with staff to identify four priority areas with strategies and action steps in each area to be addressed over the next couple of years. Those areas were public safety and well-being, housing quality and affordability, public infrastructure, economic recovery and development. These goals are good, sound goals, they reflect the core services of local government, and will be utilizing both the one-time allocation of American Rescue Plan funds and other recurring sources of revenue to help meet these goals. The budget also helps maintain city services. Urbana residents, visitors, businesses depend upon the core city services to support everyday life. So this budget allows us to continue to provide high-quality services and programs and provide some additional investment in long overdue facilities and infrastructure needs. And as focused on public facility needs, as you know, in previous years, the city completed a facilities master plan. As part of the overall capital improvement plan, the current budget that we're looking at tonight allows us to implement the first phase of the facilities plan. This includes design and construction of two new neighborhood-based fire stations, renovations in the city-building lobby for more efficient service, for accessibility and security, and construction of a large public work storage and maintenance garage for city vehicles. Like every other community in the country, the Urbana City Government, our residents and businesses continue to face unprecedented challenges. Some of the more general challenges underlying everything we do is COVID-19, the ongoing spread, and our continuing efforts at pandemic recovery. After a couple of months of zero COVID cases among city employees, for example, we're now seeing several cases a week, and this is no different than anything else in the community. This creates additional employee absences, either for recovery from the illness or as a result of exposure of family members to the disease. So the, the ability of, the impact on city staffs in particular is still very much felt. We also believe that the census undercount from the 2020 census is a, is a major challenge. We officially experienced a seven percent decline in our official census count, and we believe that's due to the pandemic-related shutdown in April and May of 2020. The financial impact of this count is that we'll see an estimated decrease in, in the per capita-based revenues that the city receives, such as the motor fuel tax, state income tax revenues, and that sort of thing. Minimum estimated of over $600,000 loss annually in revenue due to this, and this doesn't include some of the federal sources of funding we get as well. So the use of some of these standard allowance and ARPA funds for revenue replacement will help us maintain the services that people need while we determine if a special census can be conducted. But along with the, and then along with the other challenges, other challenges that we're facing include those in public safety. We're facing over the past year unprecedented levels of gun violence and community violence. We are addressing the recent spike in community violence in this budget, especially with short-term response to serious crimes, and then we'll be looking at long-term investment in the social determinants of violence, things like housing, education, job training, and that's where the use of the American Rescue Plan funds will come in and be extremely helpful. Staffing continues to be an issue, as it is everywhere. There's increased competition for employees in all sectors, including municipal government. City jobs remain vacant for longer periods, and it results in a bigger workload for current employees. We have some high-profile openings in Urbana, such as our Chief of Police and Director of Community Development Services, but we have vacancies in most departments. And inflation, it's not something we've talked about before, but it's, it's a factor now. We're facing, we're experiencing the highest rate of inflation in nearly forty years. So everyone is faced with the higher costs for essential goods and services, and I drive every day past the gas station just a block away, and I just can't believe that I'm seeing gas that's over five dollars a gallon, but we are. But gas, utilities, food, medicine, materials and supplies, construction costs, everything is being impacted by inflation, inflation, and these also directly challenge our ability to maintain services and do what we need to do for the community. But along with the challenges, we have opportunities. And again, this summer we'll be determining ARPA, and in early fall, we'll be determining ARPA investments for long-term impact in the community. The Think Urbana program that we have in Urbana for property tax rebates and strong demand for housing has resulted in new housing construction and sales of residential lots. This is good news for all taxing bodies in the community, mostly for the schools. The schools are so heavily dependent on property taxes, and we need to maintain reasonable growth in this city to support our schools. So we're really happy to see this strong residential growth. Our healthy fund balance, which we have worked very hard to build and maintain over the last few years, and especially during the pandemic, will allow us to maintain services, avoid cuts, and take advantage of opportunities that come our way. We can focus on downtown development, there are many new opportunities in the core of our city. Include the Hotel Royer, which is under renovation right now, the county, future county jail site, a, we have goals for a downtown transit center in collaboration with the Mass Transit District, and there's the former school district administrative offices on Race Street, which are currently for sale. So key locations in our downtown provide tremendous opportunity for, for growth and development. The, and then the last opportunity is one that is a silver lining in our pandemic efforts over the past couple of years. We've built stronger relationships and collaboration among local governments and taxing bodies, the University of Illinois, the Public Health District, social service organizations, and nonprofits. We were, we had a good working relationship before, but the need to face the pandemic together in a coordinated fashion has really strengthened those relationships, and that's going to help us face all these serious challenges that we are going to be dealing with today. So on, on the whole, we have a good budget, it's balanced, we have healthy reserves, and we have a lot of opportunities and work ahead of us. Thank you. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
All right, so I'm just gonna do a quick look at our overall economic and financial outlook. So first of all, we are very fortunate here to be the home of the University of Illinois. That brings a great deal of stability to the community, and that's both in terms of a stable base of employment, but also as we saw during the pandemic, we were very fortunate to be able to take advantage of testing resources that many communities did not have, and that was a big benefit to us. The university also publishes a flash index, which is a measure of economic activity in the state of Illinois, and that index was at 106 in April. Anything over 100 tells us we have a growing economy in the state, and so that's a positive for us. As the mayor mentioned, the rate of inflation is high right now. April personal consumption expenditure expenditures were up 6.3% year-over-year, down a little bit from March. You know, the, the federal, Federal Reserve, as usual, will take actions to control inflation. Their goal is 2% personal consumption expenditure growth. That's likely gonna result in higher interest rates, rates which will affect our cost of borrowing, and as you may know, we have plans to issue some debt this year. So while the inflation affects our costs for a variety of items that are in our budget, the higher interest rates affect our cost of borrowing. Unemployment is relatively low, which is a good sign for our local economy. However, as the mayor mentioned, the hiring environment is very competitive right now, which, which presents some challenges. There's this ongoing impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, and currently we're seeing a concerning rise in COVID cases, and it's just really impossible at this point to say for how long we're going to be dealing with that. So with that, I'm gonna give it to Carol.
Thank you. So this budget is built around maintaining the current levels of service that we provide in the community, but the things that have been added have been in response to the mayor and council strategic goals. And in order to do that, while still generally remain within our financial policies, we're proposing to use the ARPA standard allowance that you approved, an amount of two and a half million dollars, and using some of the fund balance to, to facilitate this. So before I, I'm gonna do the highlights by the, the four strategic areas, but I do wanna point out that the departmental presentations that you're gonna hear, some tonight and some next week, those are largely those are largely focused on the things that we've added rather than ongoing services. But the summary that I'm going to give is going to be a combination of the of both of those. So for the next slide on public safety and well-being, we're in in direct response to the discussions that the council had. We're enhancing police investigative and operational capacity to address community violence and solve serious crimes. That was a specific specifically articulated strategy. We're proposing to add one digital forensic specialist and one intelligence analyst. Those are both civilian positions that would enhance our ability to solve crimes, particularly violent crimes. We're proposing, as we had, as we had discussed when we brought to you the the IGA with the county for animal control services, that we would supplement some of the work that the Animal Control Officer used to do with a part-time evidence technician. We're proposing that the police department would go through active bystandership for law enforcement training, which is an ongoing effort in the spirit of de-escalation and so forth. We're proposing to add the fire marshal position as a full-time position and eliminate a halftime inspector, and then some advanced EMT training that Chief Dade will speak to you about. Chief Dade will make his presentation tonight, and then the police department presentation will be next week. Under housing, I would say the biggest takeaway is the community development coordinator that we're proposing. There's many sources of funds that help support housing efforts, and those are CDVG Home, Home ARP, and ARPA gap funding yet to be identified. Next week, you'll hear more about the ARP, the Home ARP Action Plan. But the the thing that is is really kind of gratifying about the community development coordinator coordinator position is that multiple department directors asked if we would, you know, help Sheila help us. We want more support on the grant side. And so people were advocating for a position in CD that would that would help the city overall. And and that's real teamwork. That makes me feel good. I'm happy about that. So we we included that to to try to chase more grant money since we're pretty limited in what we're able to generate in terms of additional dollars. We're continuing our partnerships with first followers, Habitat and Champaign County Healthcare Consumers for affordable housing opportunities. We have a partnership with Ameren in their energy efficiency program, which is targeted to people at 80% AMI or lower. We continue to have transitional housing units that we oversee. We have the tenant-based rental assistance program that you might recall. RPC and Courage Connection are managing that program, and it's directed to support victims of domestic violence. And then we're continuing to work with developers to provide affordable housing choices. Under infrastructure, you're going to hear more from Tim on this tonight, but you've heard about the Capital Improvement Plan. We had that presentation a week or two ago. One of the takeaways from the Capital Improvement Plan, I hope that you took away, is that resources are not adequate to maintain even the current level. So all the more reason why we need more grant money. But we're also proposing to take $115,000 a year for four years from the ARPA standard allowance to replace some of the lost revenue, the motor fuel tax revenue. We would put it in the local motor fuel tax fund. We are proposing an equipment operator to offset in-house leaf collection and the the work efforts that were basically displaced by shifting everyone to doing in-house leaf collection. We're proposing to add another vehicle mechanic. And then the crew leader positions are about rewarding people who step up to provide peer supervision. And it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a promotional opportunity within AFSMI. Under economic recovery and development, there's no new money here from the general fund, but we'll be using TIF and the standard allowance to advance these efforts as well as existing programs. So we, in terms of supporting and contracting with MBEs and WBEs, we're incrementally expanding our efforts with the Cdap program. We're committed to the TIF project, which is the Hotel Royer, which the the mayor mentioned. But we're also looking for to attract a new hotel on Cunningham Avenue that would basically meet some of the demand for room nights that's been generated by the Rantoul Sports Complex. The mayor also mentioned the kind of robust uptake we've had with the Think Urbana program recently. And with the overall benefits from that program, last year in 2021, we had the biggest addition to estimated assessed value. I think that's what EAV stands for, $12.9 million. And that will just continue to grow as we get more homes in and through the program. We're proposing to spend $50,000 from the ARPA standard allowance to support the African-American Heritage Trail extension into Urbana. And we're proposing to spend $50,000 from the ARPA standard allowance to basically make the market at the square fund whole. They 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 went into a hole because of COVID, and we're trying to bring them back to even so they can continue to do their work. And then a few other highlights. Under the executive department presentation that I will make then a little bit later, we're proposing to add a management analyst, which is basically, we want to clone Will Kochowski. So I think you all know what how important that is. And then we're proposing, the mayor's proposing, an employee retention slash incentive payment of $2,000 per employee. And it's it's to to basically acknowledge and recognize the burdens, the many burdens that have been placed on our staff over the last couple of years with related to COVID largely. And then that would come from the standard allowance. And you'll hear a more detailed presentation on the standard allowance next week also, where all of this will be summarized. And then there, we're not proposing to allocate the full amount of the standard allowance through all these various proposals. And we would want to reserve some portion of that unallocated balance so that if we should find that a special census would be warranted, that we have the resources to to implement that. And with that, I think I'm turning it over to Ally now with the charts and graphs that everybody enjoys.
Thank you. All right, so this chart that you are seeing shows the total revenues for all funds. So total rev, excuse me, total revenue is 73.9 million in fiscal year '23, which is about 16.8 million higher than fiscal year '22 estimates. So the increase is primarily due to anticipated issuance of general obligations, obligation bonds for capital improvement projects. And about 36, 36 million or 48.7% of total revenues are reported in the general fund, which provides for most basic city services. So the decrease in general fund revenues is about $500,000 from the fiscal year '22 estimate. This is because we anticipate, like I've mentioned earlier in the, when we presented the forecast, that the recovery growth from the pandemic we are seeing in fiscal year '22 will be temporary, and that by fiscal year '23, growth will return to the pre-pandemic pace. And the next chart shows the breakdown of taxes for most properties in the city of Urbana. And as you can see, the cities' portion is 13%, but only 3% or 1.1 million goes to the general fund to pay for city services. So the largest share of property tax goes to the library, closely followed by police and fire pensions. The school district portion is more than half the property taxes in Urbana, which is at 55%. And then next, we have the park district at 12%, the county at 8%, Parkland at 5%, and township 3%. And all other includes Forest Preserve, MTD Public Health, which is at 5%. And in this chart, it shows the fiscal year '23 budget by department. The largest share of the budget is for public works, slightly less than 42% of the total, which includes expenditures for capital improvements. Now, this can vary quite a bit depending on the capital plan. And next is community development, a little over 21%, and then police is slightly less than 14%, then followed by fire, about 11%. General services is less than 5%. That includes expenditures in the VERF and retained risk fund. These are not attributed to a single department. And this graph shows expenditures by class for all funds. In fiscal year '22, we have higher capital spending compared to fiscal year '20 and '21. And in fiscal year '23 is also a big year for capital spending. Capital can vary considerably, considerably, considerably based on timing of capital improvement projects. So total expenditure is 83.3 million, and majority of that is for personnel, which is about 38.8% of the total. And that includes salaries and benefits and contributions to the pension plans. And services, the largest difference is expenditures for allocation of grant funds and expenditures related to capital improvement projects such as planning, planning services. And this one, so we're focusing on the general operating fund. And we can see that revenues come from a wide variety of revenue sources. And then just a quick note, this, that we still factored in the impact of pandemic and the resulting recovery from the recession. So we, the total estimated revenues for the general fund in fiscal year '23 is about 39.5 million. State and home rule, sales tax and use tax revenues is the largest piece of the pie, which is about 31%. And all of those are shown in that purple slice in the chart. Next is income tax at 13% and followed by property tax at 12%. Total general fund expenditures in fiscal year '23 is 40.8 million. Majority of expenditures in the general fund is for salaries and benefits, including contributions to pension funds. And debt is about 73% of the total expenditures. All right, and this chart, so we talked about this during the forecast presentation earlier this year about the two primary indicators of fiscal health that we focus on. One is the balance between recurring revenue and expense and fund balance as a percentage of recurring expense. So this chart evaluates recurring revenues and expenditures. For fiscal year '23, recurring expense is 99.38% of recurring revenues, which is slightly above our policy guideline of 98.5%. Now, if revenues grow more slowly than expenditures over the long term, the city will be in a position of requiring revenue increase or expenditure reductions on an ongoing basis. But given that we have a healthy fund balance, this slight increase is reasonable, which gives the city some flexibility. Now, this may be the case for several years. The next chart illustrates the relationship between fund balance and recurring expenditures. Fund balance in the general fund is our emergency reserve. So this allows us to predictably provide services to our residents and to take time to be thoughtful about budget reductions, and if it becomes necessary, to make cuts. So a strong fund balance is also an important component of fiscal condition assessments that may be, that may be made by others, so including lenders, which may enable us to obtain lower interest rates. So in February of this year, the city council passed a resolution increasing the minimum fund balance from 20 to 25% of recurring expenditures. And in this budget, fund balance is 35.23%. So this healthy level of reserves allowed us to weather the pandemic without making budget reductions. So fund balance is projected to be relatively high at the end of the current fiscal year, but that's partly about timing of revenues and expenditures. In addition, some revenues, particularly sales and related taxes, performed better than our initial, initial pandemic-related estimates. So by the end of 20, fiscal year '23, we expect, we expect the fund balance to be above 25% of recurring expenditures. So it is necessary to maintain this fund balance to bridge the gap as we hopefully emerge from the pandemic. So we expect this to be spent out over the several years. And I believe that's the end of my slide. I will hand it back over to Elizabeth.
So just a few thoughts as we wrap this up. So our, looking at our future financial stability is largely dependent on recovery from the pandemic. I think this has just dragged out far longer than any of us expected when when this all began more than two years ago now. And the longer it drags out, the less, the less certain the future seems. We're providing the level of service that you're seeing in this budget by using the ARPA standard allowance and by funding down spend balance, spending down fund balance. Obviously, those are, those are limited resources. We can't do that forever, but we think we can sustain that for several years. In the long term, to maintain this level of service, we're likely going to have to look at new revenues. We don't need to do that now, but I want you to kind of keep that in the back of your minds. And then finally, looking at, looking at our plan for budget review. So so tonight, you're going to hear from Public Works, the library, the fire department, community development, and the executive department. Then next week, on June 13th, we're going to have a conversation about how the ARPA standard allowance is being used in the budget, and also hear from the police department. In a, in a last-minute change, we are going to bump the public hearing to June 27th, which is the night we're going to approve the budget. It's actually already been advertised for the 20th, but due to the Juneteenth holiday, we're going to have to bump it. And there's a requirement to have it noticed, you know, a certain number of days in advance. So on June 20th, you'll see in committee the budget ordinance and budget amendment for the current year. And then on June 27th, we'll ask you to approve both of those ordinances. So as a reminder, we we operate under the Budget Act in the municipal code. So we are required to adopt a budget before the start of the fiscal year. This is unlike some other units of local government that that operate under an appropriation system. So while a budget amendment requires a supermajority, and I know you're all familiar with that, we've talked about that. Adoption of the budget requires a simple majority, five of eight votes, including the mayor. Also, to the, to, to, to the extent that you would like to suggest changes as we go through reviewing and discussing the budget, that can get a little bit confusing, and so we'd like to make sure we're tracking those as carefully as we can. If, as we're going through a review this week and next, you want to propose a change at the time we're discussing a particular item, the best way to do that would be to propose your change and then informally poll that so we can be clear about whether that's going to be supported when when we bring the budget ordinance. So if there's majority support, then we'll write that into the budget ordinance that we bring you so that we don't have to try and do that at the last minute. So you will see a list of all the changes. And and I know you were all, you were kind of fresh to the council, most of you, when we adopted the budget last year. So you might remember, you'll see a list of all the changes from what's in the budget book to what we're asking you to approve. Also, if you're proposing changes in committee of the whole on the 20th or council on the 22nd, then those would require a motion for an amendment, a second, and a majority vote. At any time, as you're discussing changes, I might just wave my hand and and say, hey, can I clarify, is this, this what you mean? Because some, some of these things can get rather complicated, involve, you know, many, many line items. So I just want to make sure we're really clear, and we can give you back the budget that you actually want to approve. So with that, we are happy to answer questions. And if you don't have, if you don't have any, we're, I think we're ready to move on to the presentation from Public Works.
Go ahead, Chris.
Just a quick question. Can we have this PowerPoint sent to our email?
Yeah, sure. And I'll fix the issue with the dates on the last slide before I do that.
Grace.
Thanks. And so you said with the ARPA allowances, there'll be a presentation on that next week, right? Is there any way in this budget to tell what's from what, or is that more, we'll get into next week?
We'll get into the specifics next week. We'll get into the specifics next week. It's a little hard to track because all of the ARPA funds go, go into a separate fund and then they get moved within the budget and into other places. So Will Kolchowski is going to review that next week.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jaya.
A couple of quick questions. First, if they're like, kind of more technical questions, do you want us to email those to you again? Is that?
Yeah, sure, sure. Email is fine. And then any questions I get, we'll respond to the whole city council so that everybody has the same information.
And then I'm still working my way through this wonderful book. But I didn't initially see an inclusion of the evaluation of public safety in here. Is that still in here or where does that fall since it didn't get completed this fiscal year?
I, I believe we carried it over because we didn't feel like we would have that under contract before June thirtieth.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mary Alice.
Yeah, along the lines of Jaya's comment, I know that we had the Equity of Life, two million that we had set aside for the capital improvement. And I don't believe any of those projects have started or commenced. Is that correct, Carol?
That's correct.
So that will roll over for the next budget year?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so is that included in the, in the? I know that we usually do transfers, you know, with the, with the budget. We're like, okay, well, we didn't finish this project, so we're going to transfer the money into the next fiscal year. But I'm just curious how that relates to the, the end balance that we have, like how much money we're spending. So what I'm trying to get at here is, is last year, we said we were going to spend thirty-six million, just to throw a number out there. This year, we're talking about spending thirty-eight million. Does that include the two million twice?
No, so I, I will confirm this for you. But I believe what we're doing is the two million is being transferred into capital improvements in this year's budget, in the FY twenty-two budget. However, I think in the capital improvement paint plan, it'll, it'll end be in the capital improvement and replacement fund. It'll be rolled over and actually spent there in FY twenty-three.
Okay.
Tim can wave his hand if I'm confused, but.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, we'll have Community Development was at first? Sorry, Public Works.
Well, while Tim is coming up, I just wanted to say that Chief Dade had to leave because of a firefighter that he served with in Quincy had, has died. And so we'll reschedule that for next week. So as you run through the lineup, just fire won't, won't go tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, council. All right, so I'm just going to try to hit on some of the, the highlights as Elizabeth and Carol stated. You know, this is kind of looking at what is new, not as things that are remaining unchanged. We're just trying to kind of point out the things that are new in this thing related to the public works. So the first thing I'm going to touch on is our new equipment operator. Due to getting zero bidders for our bag curbside leaf collection, we were forced to in-house this, this year. And what that did, it really just kind of required a vast majority of our operations staff to kind of drop all of the other stuff they're doing to do all hands on deck for three months in the fall and then one month in the spring, which, you know, essentially it just defers a lot of other maintenance. What we found, we, we tracked our costs related to this just to see what this impact was. And it ended up being nearly equivalent to the cost of one equipment operator position. The thought was that if we could get an additional equipment operator to kind of operate outside of those four weeks for the rest of the year, it would help us maintain the level of service we're doing with all of our other maintenance and, you know, also support insourcing this curbside leaf collection at the current level of service. You know, deferring, deferring other maintenance is not recommended. As Carol stated, you know, right now, we know that our resources aren't adequate to maintain, you know, the level of service in the long term. And we're going to have to look at some other options in the near future. But we don't want to defer other maintenance right now because it's just going to enlarge our capital expenditures in a shorter timeframe. Limiting the service, we, we looked at that and it would create some negative impacts with our stormwater system because we are Tree City. We have a lot of leaves to deal with and we don't want to defer the service and get to a point where residents are also deferring, taking care of this thing. And it becomes a detriment to our stormwater collection. The organizational need here is really allowing, allowing us to maintain the existing level of service for both of, both our leaf collection and the other public infrastructure maintenance activities without negatively impacting the stormwater system. How do we expect this position to address our need? I touched on this briefly, but the predict, the productivity lost during the four weeks of leaf, leaf collection, three in the fall and one in the spring, requires many of our public work staff and equipment and rental equipment to, to tackle that at once, leaving a lot of other unattended deferred maintenance for that duration. The, the hope is that that, the additional productivity added with this extra employee for the other forty-eight weeks of the year is going to pick up that and close that gap on that level of service from the stuff that's deferred in those four weeks. How will we know if it's been successful? You know, we'll have an equal level of service for, for the, for both the curbside leaf collection and, and our other systematic maintenance. We'll resort and equal or less customer complaints. And just to note on this year, from our recycling coordinator, we had less complaints than we've had in any years for many years now. So whatever we were doing in operations, it was exceeding the expectations from previous contractors. And then we'd also be able to maintain the systematic maintenance schedules. We're, we're trying to work through the, the city systematically to address recurring maintenance issues where we're more or less putting, doing preventative work, you know, filling potholes, pruning trees, things like that, that, you know, our cycles will just get delayed longer on that stuff. And one, one point to make there, we're currently working on enhancing our work asset management system in Public Works. That I, the hope is in FY twenty-three to get that more operational, that we have better data to kind of report on this stuff and really kind of grade ourselves on how, how well we're doing on some of these things. Summary of costs for this is just under ninety-four thousand. The intent is for the U-cycle fund to support this, which previously funded the contractual leafside pickup services. Currently, the fund balance there is adequate to support this for FY twenty-three. It may need, we, in FY twenty-three, we'll be looking at our process to see if we can streamline it, make it more efficient, as well as looking to see if we need to look at the U-cycle rates to ensure that this is sustainable. The new equipment operator will be placed within our street section. And that, this is our snapshot of our operations division there. And I've just highlighted our street section. In the CIP, as you saw, our, our roadways make up a very vast majority of our operations and maintenance needs. So strategically, that was the place to put it to try to continue to help catch up in that department. Okay. That's our equipment operator. And the next one I'll go on to is our new certified mechanic. Summary proposal, software enhancements have helped identify service gaps. Our fleet supervisor, Travis Corey, has actually worked really hard with, with this Lucidity program that we have and done great implementation to identify this gap in service that, that we found. The additional mechanic would help close a service gap for us. The organizational need, so right now, what we can track in Lucidity and we can see is we're about nine months behind on essential preventative maintenance throughout of our, our fleet of about a hundred and eighty-five pieces of equipment or vehicles. And we're about three months behind on repair work. You know, when I say essential preventative maintenance, think about your oil changes on your, your personal vehicle. So we're, we're up to nine months behind on certain pieces of equipment and we're trying to close that gap. And this was about where we were at beginning last fiscal year. And we were kind of going to watch this year to see if we were able to close that gap and we just haven't been able to close it. So we, we, we've kind of tracked that to pay attention to that. And the, the other organizational needs caused by this, increased risk to our vehicle operators from not completing the, the preventative maintenance on the schedule recommended, increased repair costs due to deferring that maintenance, and reduced functional life expectancy of fleet assets, which impacts the VERF. So the VERF is the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund. And the idea is we're trying to make that fund self-sustaining where if something costs forty thousand dollars in ten years, we're, we're putting four thousand dollars away every year. But if we're not doing the, the proper preventative maintenance, we don't make it to ten years. So we end up in year eight replacing something and don't have all the money there for it and we have to go find the money elsewhere. So that's the other big part of making sure that we can get this stuff done properly. How do we expect this position to address our need? Simply put, more mechanic hours is going to help provide more utilization hours to perform this work that is currently not getting performed. That's on our backlog. How will we know if it's been successful? I, I think our targets would be completing preventative maintenance within thirty days of the targeted start date so that we're not falling behind. We're kind of in that zero to thirty aging gap, which I would say is on pace. And then beginning repair work within thirty days of work order generation so that we don't have equipment out of use for any long term of time. Some other potential benefits, I, I don't think it defines whether this is successful or not, but some other opportunities we're going to have is potentially to reduce some of our operating budget for some outsourcing needs that we're trying to facilitate to help bridge this gap in the interim. And then a possibility to provide some enhanced maintenance services on critical equipment, just doing more than just the standard oil checks for these things, doing a little bit more robust check to be identifying things proactively before they become a problem. The summary of costs related to this, total of about a hundred and two thousand there, majority of which is in personnel for just staffing the person. Primarily, this is going to be funded through the general fund, via interdepartment transfers for service needs. How it's set up now, we'll say, a police car needs to be worked on. The police department pays for those services out of, out of a fund balance in their operating budget. So, and, and most of all of the fleet or the departments have general fund transfers into them to fund them. So it, it goes through a route, but it's coming from the general fund through interdepartment transfers. Where does this fit in our organizational chart? Again, another snapshot of our operations division in Public Works. This would fall within the fleet section. Currently, we have a fleet supervisor, three certified mechanics, and a fleet parts and service clerk. So this would provide us a fourth certified mechanic. Some other notable highlights, I'm not going to be quite as in-depth on these, but I did want to bring to your attention as they're somewhat new, is the creation of the new crew leader position. So this was a result of our most recent union negotiations with ASME in fiscal year twenty-two. Effectively, this is going to create two new job descriptions in ASME. And it's not creating any new FTEs, but it's allowing another tier of promotion responsibility to promote some internal union leadership, provide that next step up for some folks that, that they're kind of doing some of the leadership things, but they're not recognizing it differently now. Additional compensation to promote the existing staff to these positions is going to require seventeen thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars annually for their additional responsibilities they're going to be definitively taking on. And then another notable highlight is our electrical section and interim contractual service needs. We've had some critical staffing vacancies for quite a while now there. Our electrical supervisor position and two of our electrician positions have been unstaffed. Two of those for over a year now and one going on a year at this point. And it's just proven to be a very challenging position to fill. It takes a special expertise and it's a very highly competitive market right now to find this thing. So we've, we've kind of struggled to fill those. And, and what that's led to is kind of a backlog of critical public infrastructure needs. We have a number of light poles that have been down and we've kind of cleaned up the site, but it remains down. It remains unrepaired because we don't have the staff to go out there and take care of it. It's also limited our staff's availability for specialized skills for emergency callouts. We, right now, we only have two electricians within our electrical division. Our facility supervisor is pulling double duty and kind of providing the electrical supervising as best he can in the interim. And what's happening with only two folks with these specialized skills for emergency and on-call, it's, it's stretching them thin. So what, what we are proposing to do going in FY twenty-three is having some interim contractual service contracts. We, we started one with a local qualified electrical contractor in late FY twenty-two with some emergency stuff that we were not able to get to. We would like to extend that through FY twenty-three. And we're, we're approximating eighty-five thousand dollars. It's kind of for on-call stuff. And we, we have some ability to dictate what, how, how important or how emergent these problems are. If, if they're not, some of them will just wait longer to be fixed. But if there's a budget constraint or something, you know, that could potentially allow us to shift some other things around. The other thing we'd like to pursue in FY twenty-three is working with utility locating services. Our electrical section is currently responsible for, for providing all of our Julie locates. I think we get about fifty-six hundred to six thousand tickets per year that we are obligated to go out and field locate things for construction. The hundred and thirty-five thousand, that's based on some budgetary numbers that we've, we've talked with other municipalities that use utility locating services and looking internally at what the staffing of this costs. And it's in the same ballpark as the hundred and thirty-five thousand that we're facilitating with this. That would at least allow our second electrician to displace those duties and do some of these more emergent things. So we have two electricians doing truly electrical work for us with the specialized skill sets to do that. That's what I've got and I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions for Tim? James, go ahead.
Yeah, this is, this is kind of a, kind of a picky question that I maybe should be asking Elizabeth. But on the personnel summary, I don't see where the, I think it's the mechanic is showing up as a new, a new hire. I'm on page twenty-nine. I see under Public Works, there's a bunch of departments. I see an ad of a person under street maintenance and construction. That was the leaf person, right?
Correct.
And then down under something labeled on the next page, equipment services. There's a one point one person added. That's the team lead? Or is that the mechanic?
That would be the mechanic.
So equipment services is the, is the, where the mechanic work is?
Correct.
So where would the team lead that you described show up?
That, that's just a, it's, it's really just a promotional.
Okay, so it's not a new.
It's not a new position. It's a promotional one. So it would fall under one of our operations sections.
Okay. And you hit all my other questions in your explanation, so thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
Thank you, Tim, for that summary. It was really helpful. So I just, you know, one of the things that we talk a lot about are one-time costs and reoccurring costs. So adding everything except for the contractual services, it looks like it's about two hundred and fifteen hundred thousand in reoccurring cost increase for Public Works. Is that what you're proposing?
Correct. Yes.
And so you said that the, the new equipment operator would be in the street section?
Yes.
So is it the street section that currently did the last fall leaf collection?
Primarily our streets section. We had other help from other sections as well, though.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out. So what would the new equipment operator, what, what are the general tasks that they do?
Uh, pavement patching, pothole repairs, crack sealing, curb and gutter maintenance, anything and everything under, under a street's purview, sidewalks. Yeah, I mean, a, anything tied to streets is generally what this person would be doing. So this person would just be helping getting more of that done. Right now, we, we know we have more need than what we can fulfill because currently our street sections is purely reactive. We're reacting as quick as we can to the worst sections as quickly as we're able to identify them and the public's able to identify them of those. We're not even really to a, a point internally that we're able to tackle proactive preventative maintenance yet. A lot of that is being outsourced within the CIP.
Okay, all right. And then you said that that is about equivalent. So were we paying about ninety-five thousand a year for a leaf?
No, we were not. It was, previously, I believe, our leaf contracts were somewhere in the range of thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
But in twenty nineteen, which was the last time we actually had a bidder, we had a zero bid and then we requested the previous bidder to reach back out. I think it was somewhere in that ballpark. So there's potential in there for a contractor to come in and be more financially, a, a, a financial betterment between that thirty-five thousand up to the eighty-five thousand or ninety-four thousand. But we're simply not getting bidders.
So it was thirty-five thousand per leaf collection or for the whole year?
That's annually.
That's annually.
Correct.
And so I guess what I'm concerned about is we've been hearing a lot about inflation and the cost of increase in terms of utilities and so forth. So this is three times the amount of what we were paying if we could find somebody.
Correct.
So we would probably have to address the recycling tax.
Correct. Currently, that, and that's kind of noted there, the fund balance is currently adequate to carry that this year. And the idea is probably in the next year, we need to look at that rate to see if we need to make an adjustment to provide this service.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
James?
Sorry, I have one more and I bet Elizabeth's going to have to answer this too. But it went, like, on this new equipment operator, this is more a general question. When it says personnel, ninety-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-one, is that all salary or is that a burdened cost with like benefits and other? or is that a burdened cost with like benefits and other parts in it?
Correct, all the salary, benefits, pension costs, health insurance.
Okay, thank you.
Grace? Thank you, I was just on the page that had the recycling revenues and expenses and I just lost it in this one. But in the actual budget where it has the layout, because it looks like the fees of revenue are the same or even slightly exceed the overall cost for the recycling program. So do you mean it would be covering like other costs for a leaf pickup? Or, because is that the one you mean the fees would have to be assessed to be increased?
Correct.
But the recycling program, the fees do cover the expenses for that program, right?
For right now, because we have a positive fund balance. I think we had a fund balance of, and I don't know, don't quote me, but two hundred or three hundred K currently in the leaf or the U-cycle fund. And previously, with this being budgeted at the thirty-five to forty K range and having to take on this, last year, operations just essentially, we just ate that in the sense of we deferred maintenance on other things. The idea is if we have to insource this, this is the cost. We can carry it for FY twenty-three because we had a fund balance, but beyond that, it's going to have to be reviewed.
Because you're talking about, are you talking about the leaf pickup exclusively here? Not the recyclables at U-cycle program, right?
Correct.
Interchangeable? Did you call it U-cycle, was that the leaves also?
Yeah, U-cycle actually funds the leaf program as well.
Okay, so those are both under?
They're both under the U-cycle umbrella.
Okay, yes, because I was talking about just the recyclables and like I said, I just lost that budget. But we're talking about the leaf pickup specifically in there.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question, Mary Alice, will you take the chair?
Yeah, the chair recognizes Chandra.
So you mentioned how the leaf collection bids were zero. Is that for like a service or contractor or for an individual person?
For a contractor. We essentially published a request for proposals, didn't get any action on that, had zero bidders. We reached out to the person, so twenty nineteen, this happened as well. We reached out to the person, convinced them, you know, you did this before, are you sure you don't want to bid on this? Republished, they bid on it, they were our only bidder again. This year, the same thing happened, we reached out, they said, we're just not interested. We've got other bigger things that they're working on right now and they have staffing challenges. So we published it twice this year with zero vendors proposing anything to us.
So now you're just moving to hire one person as this, as part of their job is the leaf collection?
Yes, yes and no. Essentially, bring one person in to offset the six to ten people that it absorbs during this four-week period of the year. So it's not a perfect apples to apples, but it's very close when you look at the equipment and labor costs tied to what this effort took.
And then you mentioned about the utility location services being, again, contracted out. Do you foresee, like who do you see foresee doing that? Or as far as like, do you foresee getting zero bids again?
We would probably put something out very similar to the leaf collection or RFP to provide these services. We are aware there is at least one company within this area that provides it to many of the other existing utilities, which very likely they're going to be the alternative because they're going to be able to provide an economy of scale. They're going to a ticket that has Ameren, Illinois American, well, maybe not Illinois American, but a lot of telecommunications folks and ours on it. We're sending a separate person to locate the utilities on the same ticket. So it's likely that they're going to be a front runner in this, but the idea is to put it out there and request proposals for that.
Okay, thank you.
Should I let the chair back?
Yes, I'll take it back.
All right, everyone, let's go to the chair.
Grace?
Another question for, I don't know, the general staff here about where or if the public could find this draft? And also confirming that this is the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three proposed budget as labeled on the cover. And it looks like online, the past one, twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget is there as last year. So I was just wondering if we could clarify what years we're on and how the public could find this for review.
So when we say FY twenty-twenty-three budget, we mean twenty-twenty-two slash twenty-three. Those are kind of interchangeable terms. So it is online on our website, there's a public inspection copy with the city clerk that people can come in and look at, and there's also a copy at the library that people can view. Did I answer the question?
I think, well, because I see that the one, I'm looking at this one that looks like last year's on the website. It says for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-one.
I don't.
Oh, is that, is that this one?
I'd have to look, I'm not looking at the webpage now, but I know I did look at the webpage after it was posted and it was there, so if it's not, we'll get it back there.
I'm looking at the one that came with the agenda, that's linked to the agenda. It is, it is this year's, it'll be next year's budget.
It's linked to the agenda, but it should also be on the financial webpage.
Are you looking at the award for last year's budget? That's not, that's not the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Tim? Well, Tim, we thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, the Urbana Free Library is next.
There we go, that's better. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to present the budget that the library board has passed at their meeting this month to you for inclusion in the city's budget. Also, I am thankful for the support that the city has provided as underneath your umbrella over the years as part of the budgeting process, but also your amazing city staff. We would not be the library that we are without the staff you have to be colleagues with us and help us along our way because you have many more people with great expertise that help us out in ways large and small on a regular basis. So again, thank you for all that you do. Right here on my first slide, you see an example of our partnership with the city. We received one of the public arts and culture grants and we matched funds from that grant with the Urbana Free Library Foundation gift to us to have murals put up on a building that we owned, except it needed to be torn down. So we partnered with the Cunningham Township and the two murals at the top are on either the east and west side of the Cunningham Township building, showing ways that people use the Urbana Free Library and collaborate together in our community. There's a musical instrument in the one on the left and we do check out things like guitars and lutes and drums and keyboards and such. And then on the other side, of course, we've got the beautiful book that people are sharing with each other. The mural on the bottom was here for just a quick minute. So many people wanted to participate in the mural process, they brought their friends with them and we ran out of mural space on the Cunningham Township building. So thankfully, the building that was being torn down wasn't torn down yet. So we were able to have people work with Langston, the professional muralist, to collaborate together. They created this beautiful mural at the bottom, which we were very sorry to see go. But I just wanted to share that this is one of the many ways the library and the city partner together to enhance the lives of our community members. And at the ribbon cutting ceremony that some of you attended, Danielle spoke very movingly of how changing how the building looks makes coming to a government building to ask for assistance less imposing and more friendly and more warm. And it's encouraging people to ask for help that you are providing funds for in a way that they didn't feel welcome to do before. So art that you are funding is making a difference in our community at a number of levels. So thank you for that as well. I just have a few slides for you. At the very high level, we have a number of funds. The eight oh twos are our general funds. The eight oh threes are a special reserve fund in which libraries are allowed to put money aside for future building projects like IT and construction funds and furnishings and such. And then our eight tens are our special gift funds that people have donated to the library, including the Friends of the Urbana Free Library that generously donate tens of thousands of dollars every year from funds that they raise. And then we have the eight twenties and the eight twenties were the funds that were incoming and outgoing of the Weber Building, which is the building that is being torn down. So you'll see that there is, we're pulling money from another area to take care of paying off that building coming down and then that is flat. So that line will go away next year likely after taxes are paid and such. So overall, the operating budget is about four point five million dollars. You're going to see in those total lines, the first one, a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. We also had some capital projects that were not completed this year. So we are saving that money and then pulling it out of the fund balance to move ahead. Things like renovating the staff parking lot, which is terribly potholed and hard for people to deal with. Looking at a nice renovation of the circulation desk audiovisual area. We have a number of items behind the desk on shelves that you still have to ask for. The CDs collection, which is not as efficient of staff time and it takes away some of people's agency of just browsing and checking out what they want. So that is on the doc or on the agenda for this year. And that's why we're going into our fund balance to do a couple of these special projects. So property taxes are super important to the schools, they're also super important to the libraries. Eighty-four percent of our budget, of our budget, of our budget are property taxes. And we continue to see growth in the Friends of the Urbana Free Library's online bookstores. They raised about twenty thousand dollars of online book sales this year and we have a new Alibris store that just opened. So in addition to the normally generous funding from the Urbana Free Library Foundation, which is between forty and sixty thousand dollars a year, there's a new fund, the Frampton Fund, of twenty-five thousand dollars that the Frampton children donated in honor of former library board member Peg Frampton. And they wanted the funds to be spent on specific outreach initiatives so more people in our community could learn about the library and start using it and take advantage of the tax dollars that they are paying for and the services. The foundation has also announced a matching grant campaign with the family that is going to raise additional funds. And so in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, starting now, they're going to match up to twenty-five thousand dollars of additional funds to support the library. So we are very excited about that. One of our goals in our strategic plan is to steward our physical and financial resources to allow for growth and sustainability and working with the kind donors and community members and former community members is one that we can do that and add these special touches that the library couldn't provide otherwise. In this budget, we propose and the board approved that we go fine-free and we'll talk more about that later. So this budget doesn't include any fine income in the library, but we saw the amount of fines decreasing over just the years that I've been here from in the eighty-five thousand dollar a year range down to about fifteen thousand dollars a year. There are a number of things that push that change, including an increase in people using downloadable items that don't accrue fines. And with the pandemic especially, people really embraced eBooks and e-movies and the audiobooks and weren't checking out as many physical items. And so therefore, just there wasn't as much fine money coming in. What we have seen, though, is that we expected there would be sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in fines, which of our budget of four point five million is point four percent of the overall budget. So we were sad to see any revenue go, but looking at the importance of being accessible to our community members, especially those that need us most, it seemed prudent to propose going fine-free and the board agreed with us. Also, there were other revenue streams that were increasing like photocopies and notary service. So the difference in what actually is in that fines line was just about fifty-six hundred dollars, not sixteen thousand five hundred. As we look at expenses, you can see that there's the orange area, which is centralized cost. That's where things like staff health insurance goes. The largest section is the Adult and Youth Services, AYS. That is the gray area, that is the largest department of people. Those are the people answering your reference questions, doing programming, storytime, as well as the actual materials that are being purchased for the library. You will notice in, if you're looking through the budget book, there are some lines that have been zeroed out. We now have an IT manager doing some things in a new way and we now actually have a facilities manager for the first time. And we were able to transfer money from centralized cost into the IT and facilities department. So if you're looking through wondering, why isn't there a budget for equipment? There is, it's just been moved to the other areas. And again, as I mentioned, we don't generally ask that the board go into fund balance for projects, but this year, it was just hard to get some things done. We had a couple of special building projects that came up and needed assistance and we had to reallocate our time and we have reallocated the funds in here. You'll notice that the library cafe is in the budget, it's currently not open. Right now, we don't believe that we have the foot traffic to open the cafe and make a profit. We are continuing to watch the foot traffic and as it increases, we'll make a determination of whether or not we will open it or whether we'll decide to close it. And we expect to do that in fiscal twenty-three, but we've budgeted in case we can open for it. People do miss their coffee. The good news is we have lots of great coffee shops in town, so we can have patrons support those businesses instead. So we work within the constraints of the city budgeting process, but we also need to meet state standards that have been put forward for public libraries. And so I just wanted to mention, this one here has to do with state libraries needing to spend a minimum of twelve percent of their budgets on materials for patrons of their operating budgets. So some libraries look at these numbers and they include everything like stamps and stickers and staff time and having an online catalog. And that would be our bigger number, that nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. If you include all those factors, which again, libraries across the state do, that shows that we are spending about twenty-two percent of our budget on materials. But some libraries look at literally just the books and the DVDs and the guitars. And if you look at just those numbers, we're at eleven percent. So either way, we are right where we need to be in providing, that we are providing the amount of money as determined by the standards of the state to our community or well exceeding them depending on which one you look at. Also, the state puts standards forward about salaries. So salaries should account for up to sixty percent. And salaries plus fringe benefits, which they list as FICA, pension and health insurance, account for up to seventy percent of the total budget. So as you see, we are also within the budget limits that the state sets for that as well. We're meeting the standards. All staff will receive a cost of living increase and qualified staff will receive a step increase for longevity. And we have a number of employees who are at the minimum wage and the next minimum wage increase goes into effect in January. So some people will be getting their raises in July and then will also for their positions be getting the minimum wage increase in January as well. I'm excited because in this budget, we were able to manage a continuation of paid COVID-nineteen leave for staff as the city has a COVID leave package, the library does as well. So that if people are getting vaccinated or get sick with COVID and they need the leave, we provide that to them and that's for all staff. Also, we've added paid sick leave hours for hourly employees, which we have not had in the past, which is great because we don't want people having to make the choice to come into work sick or not get paid and be able to pay their bills. We've also added the paid parental leave for up to eight weeks for staff who work twenty hours a week or more. And that is brand new for us and not common in libraries, but some libraries across the state are adding it. So looking at our amazing employees who are the heart and soul of a library and wanting to keep them and keep them happy and keep them well compensated, we look for ways that we could, within the budget that we have, and again, the city constraints, reward them for the excellent work they do and make it an even better work environment. And I'm very proud that we could come up with this budget and that the board approved it. And so fine-free, fine-free is awesome. And you can see here how many people, just at the snapshot in time, will be freed of their fines and will feel differently about the library. We have people that come in and argue about the quarter on their account, like because it's either an annoyance or it's more than that. And there are a number of people that come in regularly and they'll use the library, but they refuse to get a card because it's too much of a risk for them and their family. If you're a parent and you're checking out twenty picture books, which is about what you check out because you don't want to have to read the same one every night over and over? You want to have a variety? It's too risky to accrue fees. DVDs are a dollar a day and if you check out ten DVDs and they're late, you're suddenly at ten dollars for one day. And we want to have a great welcoming, warm relationship with our patrons. Other libraries that have gone fine-free have found that more people use the library and actually donations increase. There's a number of ways that going fine-free benefits the community, but making ourselves accessible and being able to reach out with our new outreach campaign funded by our donors, we can talk and with our community and make ourselves the place that we want to be for them. to be for them and let them know, and we're excited. Do you have any questions for me?
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah. Do you, thanks for the presentation, and I love fine-free. That's great. Do you own the land that that building got knocked down next to the township?
Yes, the foundation purchased that land for us on the corner back in 2013.
Any plans, do you know?
Not yet. We're bringing it down, and then we're working on a building program right now with former director Fred Schliff and looking at the library's needs. And when we've got that program done, we can look holistically because we own a part of the block that the city owns part of where the main building is, and then we own the garden space that the township rents from us, the empty corner, and then the staff parking lot behind it. So the library has ownership of both sides of that corner.
Okay. Well, I just suggest you hurry up and make a plan, because you know Danielle will build a shelter on that real quick. I'm teasing.
James?
Yeah, thank you, Celeste. Thank your staff for all the work they do to serve the community and for your leadership and the board's leadership every day. I do have a couple of questions. If you could back up to the pie chart.
Expenses or revenue?
The pie chart. The, I just wanted to make sure if I, no, the next one, sorry. You had the right one before. Just wanted to make sure that I understood the yellow is the Champagne County Historical Archives. Is that what the CCHA stands for?
It does, and that is... Bipocals, sorry. So what is your question?
I just wanted to make sure that people who saw that understood what that abbreviation was for.
Thank you for that. Library talk.
I am looking at the fund statement that we got in our budget. I don't know if you have that. And I'm trying to understand the difference between fiscal year '22 estimate and fiscal year '22 actual.
So the actual is what we spent to date, and the estimate is what we expect to spend throughout the whole year.
For fiscal year '22?
Which is what we're in right now.
Which is up on June 30th?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is data pulled a month ago?
Okay, so it's about three quarters of the year. Okay.
It's close, yeah.
Okay. And then the other question that I had was, it looks like your fund balance is two point one million roughly. Is that correct?
Let me get to that page.
Yep, it's right there at the bottom there.
Yes, it is.
Which is more than fifty percent of maybe an annual expenditure, or close to that. So can you tell me what the board or your target for a fund balance is and how that operates in the library world?
Some of that, actually a good chunk of that, and I don't have the number with me, but we'd be happy to provide it, of that fund balance are the restricted gifts that we've received from donors. So some of that is money set aside. So some of that is not spent.
So it's not a true fund balance. It's assets.
It's assets.
Total assets. And I think it's worth pointing out that when the building was expansion, expanded last time, and Fred Schliff was very involved with that, the west wall of the library was actually designed so that if that property to the west was ever available, the building could continue to be expanded if that's what the community needed, right?
That's right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I really appreciate sharing more about the fine-free library, and I really appreciate that we can kind of go above the norm and not just compare ourselves to everyone around and do that, but it sounds like, you know, really willing to go bold and set our own kind of standards and goals and vision. So I really appreciate that. And to slide in my question with it, or I guess slide in my comments with the question is if we could have these slides shared with us, please, and for all the presenters tonight, if we could have these slides.
I'll send them right over.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Could you just go back to the very first slide for a moment?
The mural?
Oh, sorry, second. The first content, first content slide, this one. Yeah, so I just was, the formatting is a little odd to me because revenue is listed like a negative amount and expenses a positive. Is that just a quirk?
That's an accounting thing.
Okay.
And so, yeah, what I should have done is made it the normal way, but for normal non-accountants. Love accountants.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify that that's what I was seeing.
So in revenue, a negative is a good thing. In that way, yes.
Yes, but that means that like some of these lines, you're still expecting more expenses than revenue, but it looks like there's a healthy fund balance to compensate for that.
Right. So there are things we budgeted for this year and then didn't spend the money on, so it's going into the fund balance, and then we're budgeting to spend it right back out of the fund balance. That's what you're seeing.
Yep, thank you.
Mary Alice?
Thank you. As always, it's always interesting to hear what new plans the library has. And I'm really, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate you looking out for the hourly employees, giving them an opportunity to have paid sick leave is wonderful, not only for them, but also for the workers in the library and also the community, so that we can hopefully put a stop to some of this community spread that's going on. So thank you for thinking of how we can help hourly workers as well as the full-timers.
Thank you.
Mary Alice, will you take the chair?
Sure, the chair recognizes Chandra.
Hi, Celeste. So does the fine-free start July 1? When does that begin, so I can start shouting it from the rooftops?
It started the day after the board meeting.
Okay, so it's now?
It is now, and we're doing that soft launch because the company that runs our card catalog system needs to, and we're working with them to pull out the fines. So if you lost a book, you still pay for the book, but if you had overdoses on something, those are going to disappear. So no fines are accruing right now, but it's more efficient to pay a company five hundred dollars than to have staff manually change it all. So that's all we're waiting on right now. We expect end of the month, early July, we'll have something that we can shout from the rooftops, and I will share with you all, so if you could share with your constituents, that would help make a difference for people.
That would be helpful. Thank you so much.
Would you like the chair back? All right. Every language is here, Chandra.
Are there any more questions for Celeste? Celeste, we thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is that better?
Good evening. Staff proposes adding a community development coordinator position to the grants management division. During departmental budget meetings, departments requested a staff person to assist with grants. Adding a staff person to the grants management division will allow other departmental staff to focus on their area of expertise. Centralized grants management is more efficient than separate departments managing the process. The position would be responsible for coordinating grants across all city departments. Duties would include applying for and implementing grant opportunities for all departments, along with budgeting and compliance monitoring. Current staffing levels inhibit the city's ability to apply for and receive new sources of grant funding that would have a positive impact on the community. Currently, each department is responsible for applying for grants on their own time, as staff and timing allows. As a result, grant opportunities are often passed over due to a lack of staff capacity. In the past, grants management staff have helped police, fire, and public works apply for grants when necessary. However, this has not been an efficient arrangement, as the grants division also lacks staff capacity. An additional community development coordinator would allow the city to coordinate grants through one department, which would streamline processes and provide departments with additional support. This enhanced coordination and capacity would increase grant funding for vital projects citywide. Staff will measure the success of the community development coordinator through an analysis of increased grant funding and successful project implementation. And this is a chart of the grants management division where the position would be housed. Estimated cost for the position is, staffing cost is a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and six thousand. Staff is also requesting funding for subscription to Urban Footprint, which is a software service to illustrate complex planning issues such as environmental resilience in development or housing opportunity in different parts of the community, and provide the facilitator and the participants the ability to adjust maps and test ideas during the community input process. The service creates an interactive visualization and can be used for online and in-person meetings. The next phase of the comprehensive plan will be taking a look at specific planning topics to meet goals and desires heard in the 2021's input process. Outside of public meetings and planning for the comprehensive plan, planning division will be using Urban Footprint to provide more insight on planning and zoning cases. And the request for the scenario planning software is seven thousand dollars. Does anybody have any questions?
James?
Thank you for the report. I do have a question. Under the TIF II area, for, again, I'm focusing on this personnel summary thing, there is half a person, it looks like, reduction in the economic development section of that. What is, what is that? How are we getting It's on page thirty.
We are moving, right now, half of the communication specialist salary is paid out of TIF II, and so we are moving that into, I think it's fully in exec now, because initially there had been more work being concentrated on TIF, and now it's much more citywide, and it's not an appropriate allocation to TIF anymore.
Thank you. That answers another question I was going to ask later, but, and then my other question is, the software cost, seven thousand dollars, is that recurring or is that one time?
No, it's recurring.
So we'll be doing that forever as long as we're using that?
Potentially. I mean, we'll definitely use it next year during the comprehensive planning process, and then evaluate its use to decide if we'll use it further.
Elizabeth was saying something over here. I couldn't quite hear.
So it's budgeted as a one-time expense. If it's evaluated, if we decide to continue, there would be a new budget request next year.
Okay, thank you. I get it.
Mary Alice?
Thank you, Sheila. So right now, you're filling the role of interim community development, and typically you work in grants. So this new request for a grant coordinator, would that be in addition to the existing position that you have normally?
Yes, right.
Okay, and that would sit under, that position would report to you. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Because I think if memory serves, I know that the fire department just got a really big grant for six firefighters. I know the police department's gotten grants. I know Public Works has gotten grants and so forth. So is the current process that each department goes out and fills out their own paperwork and fills, and then do they also have to keep track of all the details of that grant?
Yes.
That's the current process?
That's the current process, until they hit a bump in the road and then they call us to help, you know, however we can, which has been a great partnership. I mean, I think it makes more sense that it comes out of our division rather than expect Chief Searls to try to figure out a grant portal that doesn't make any sense to him. So we were able to help him with a couple this year, as well as fire.
And then I know that when you administer a grant, you're also allowed to take kind of an administration fee, so to speak, which usually gets charged against a salary.
Right. A lot of the grants do come with an administrative fee, you know, the allocation that we can use for administration.
So if it is successful, it's possible that some of the cost of that coordinator will be covered by those grants that they hopefully would be able to obtain?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Depends on the source, but yes.
Grace?
Thank you. So thank you for the presentation, and looking at these on the slide that's up now, if we could explain, so like the community development grants management manager, and then the positions on the bottom, because there's, you're in the middle, and the top box is currently, right, are your positions? And then at the bottom, you currently have one full-time staff or one and a half?
One and a half.
Okay, so you already have the office specialist, and then we're just adding the community development coordinator on this diagram, right? Okay. Thank you. And I had another question about the rental housing fund. Is that the transitional houses?
I don't have that here in front of me.
Page 112 is what I'm looking at, Fund 10050522, rental housing. I can follow up on that one, too. If it's not a handy answer, I was just wondering what that's referring to.
Yeah, that is the inspections that the building safety people do for university housing. So they go in and inspect the units that are located in Urbana. Typically, it's sororities, fraternities, those type of units.
Okay, then my other kind of question along that then is, are the transition houses management and stuff in here?
Yeah, it's under CDBG. It's part of our public services cap. So it'll be in the regular, regular budget that you just adopted as part of the annual action plan.
In the action plan, so not as specific as on this one, is that right?
I think it is in here, too. It's just under, no, it's in regular. Yeah, it's under miscellaneous contractual services, where typically falls. Yeah, under grants miscellaneous contractual services is where that falls.
Could you point me to a page number, I'm sorry, in the line?
160, and it's in the top section.
Are there any other questions for Sheila? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Sheila. We'll have the executive department.
Good evening again. Most of what I'm going to present is about the management analyst, and as I mentioned, we're cloning Will Kolchowski, so this would give us a new management analyst, and then we would have a total of two. For now, we're proposing that this would be a limited-term position, so that is not long-term recurring expense. And this one was another instance of one department, well, actually, Tim had suggested that he needed a Will Kolchowski of his own, and we said, well, that's a great idea, but we're going to put the position in exec so that we can deploy that person across the priorities overall for the government. It is a great idea, and we really appreciate it. So the management analyst would assist with strategic planning, process management, financial performance, policy and code updates, and special projects, and really help us operate using more efficient processes and, you know, just help us evolve internally. So the measures of success are many, and I wanted to just give you some examples of some of the things that Will has worked on, because we have, you know, a good example there. So one of the things he did early on was the Landscape Recycling Center has been operating, and it's been operating in the black, but it was on, it was moving in a direction that it was going to go in the red, and it really never had a business plan. So Will worked with the staff there to understand it as a business and put it on a more sustainable footing financially. So that was something he had done early on. You know about all his hard work related to the capital improvement plan. He took that from a bunch of spreadsheets that, you know, only engineers could understand, turned it into something that was project-based, which was much more transparent for the public and you all to understand. And then over time, we've enhanced the amount of collaboration that goes into it, including collaboration among different departments, but also our partners like the Park District and the School District. And then Will has been the internal lead on several working groups. He's, he functions as a project manager in that, in that capacity, and we could use a lot more help there. And then he just helps to manage processes, like when we do a, you know, some of the departments... And then he, he just helps to manage processes, like when we do a, you know, some of the departments, if they're doing a large RFP or RFQ, he's helped to manage that. And as you know, he's been the lead on ARPA. He's been our, he's been our point of contact with the RPC. So, just more of that kind of support is really essential. So as I said, this would be a limited-term position, about $112,000 a year with salary and benefits. And then, it fits into the org chart as yet, when, when Will put this together for me, I was like, "Hmm, I think we're gonna need to reorganize Executive, because I have too many people reporting to me." So Will will probably come up with some ideas for reorganization. And then I wanted to just call out a couple of other notable items in the Executive Department. We're adding some more one-time training for HREO to help get additional certifications, and then also to support CPRB and HRC. And then, for two years running, we're allocating $30,000 a year. And this is to, we, we, we did some internal stakeholder feedback among employees. And we got feedback about how important it is that there's employee recognition and opportunities to kind of just reinforce the culture of our workforce. And so there's things that, that we, we had gotten away from because of COVID, like holiday parties and so forth. So this is a combination of some centrally-held funds that would be used citywide, but then portions of it are allocated out on a, on a pro-rata basis to the departments, so that they can try and do some things that, that would resonate with their employees. So it's, you know, retention is as important, if not more important, than recruitment at this point. So, we're trying to be responsive to the feedback we got from our employees. So those are the highlights from Exec, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Carol?
Yes, James?
Thank you for the report. If you could back up to the Executive Org Chart, there you go. Again, I know I'm fixated on the personnel, but personnel is the biggest part of our recurring part of our budget. So that's why I spend a lot of time there. Under Information Technology, it says we have 5.1 staff. But in this picture, it looks like we have four and a half.
I agree, I agree with the four and a half.
Okay.
I, I'm gonna have to get you the answer to that, but.
I did notice that there is a person that would have been probably part of IT, the ARMS Program.
Yes.
Fund.
Yes.
Which is going away.
Yes.
This year, is that?
I don't know that that's the full amount of FTE. I'm gonna, I'll just get.
Okay.
I'll get the answer.
Thank you.
Grace, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks again for the presentation. I was wondering if you could clarify on this chart, the added position? Like, is this Executive Assistant a new proposed position?
The, the proposed position is Management Analyst, which, that says Management Analyst New, which is right smack in the middle. Are you asking about that, or some other block?
Okay, so I didn't know if this Executive Assistant was new, but that's existing. Is that Kate?
The Executive Assistant, that's, that's, that's out to the.
Yes, the top out.
Yeah, that's Kate.
Okay. And so... Cause it says that there'd be an increase in position in Mayor-City Administrator One, because it's underneath that? I'm confused where the Management Analyst position is here.
The Management Analyst, Management Analyst New is directly under the City Administrator box. You see Management Analyst, and then Management Analyst New.
Okay, thank you. Yes, again, just comparing it to the Personnel Summary, that looks like it's broken down differently. And then a half-position for Public Communications also? Is a change here?
I can crosswalk this with, with the, I think that page of the, the Budget Book that you're looking at.
Yeah, the Public Communications we talked about earlier, it came out of the TIF area, right?
Okay. So we have a half in, we have had half in the Executive Budget and half in TIF, and now it will be all in Exec.
Okay.
And that's the Communication Specialist?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Go ahead.
I, I think you already answered this. I'm really excited to see the increase in staffing just across the board. I really hope that's gonna be helpful to everyone. The three-year time limit, is that because of the, the goal of using ARPA funding for that position? Or is that kind of just to, to see if that fills the need, and then reevaluate, since it is time-limited?
It's, it's a strategy that we use from time to time, when we don't know if we have a sustained amount of work, but it doesn't hit the, the revenue projections in the same way.
Charisse?
I guess the, the main question that I have is about the Administrative Assistant vacant.
Yes.
That's kind of just purely going through between the City Attorney and the Senior Advisor.
Yeah.
Okay, so, my question, I guess basically, is this a, is, is this your, your adminis- Administrative Assistant that I, I think that you sorely need?
I, I do not have a dedicated Administrative Assistant, and, and we haven't decided what the scope of work for this Administrative Assistant would be. But like many things in Exec, you know, it's, it's very hard to pigeonhole anyone, because we all need to band together. There's a lot of additional support that many of the individuals in Exec could use from that position.
So this is, this is my question, then. Because Kate services you and the mayor. That didn't come out right. Kate is in service to you and the mayor. And, and on top of that, she's the Deputy Liquor Commissioner.
Yes.
So the vacancy, is this gonna be a floater?
We haven't determined exactly how we're gonna use that position yet.
Okay. I'm just trying to actually take some of the plates out of the air for you, because I see a lot of plates.
Oh, there's lots of plates. And there's many that you don't see.
Well, I'm sure. Okay.
But thank you.
Yeah, just, I know, I just, I was just trying to get an understanding, cause I'm like, "Oh, she's gonna get an Administrative Assistant."
Get me another Management Analyst, and I'll be happy.
Okay.
James?
That is not a new position, right? That's a vacant position from previous?
Right. We just haven't prioritized the hiring, because we have.
Okay, thank you.
We have more important hires to do first.
Any other questions for Carol? Okay, thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
I think that concludes the budget chats. Okay, next on the agenda are staff reports.
Three quick things. First of all, the city will observe the Juneteenth Independence Day on Monday, June 20th. This is the first year we will have made this an official city holiday. So non-continuous, offices serving non-continuous, providing non-continuous services will be closed. Therefore, we will be scheduling the, is it a council, committee meeting on the 21st? And I sent an email out earlier today, and I'd appreciate feedback from everybody to, to let us know if you can attend that day, so we can confirm that we have a quorum. Also, on that day, RPC is planning, tentatively planning to come back to council with a discussion of an accelerated process for ARPA, per your request. And then on the 13th, you'll get an update on the Home ARP Action Plan. So that'll be a nice overview in terms of all the ARPA funds available for folks. And we'll be sending out an announcement about Juneteenth holiday later this week.
Okay, that's it, okay. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2022-06-044R. A resolution approving and authorizing the School Resource Officer Program intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and the Urbana School District Number 116.
Let's see. The la- The last time I did this at the school board, I blew out the mic, so. You're gonna have to excuse me. So I've asked Superintendent Ivory Tatum to join me, and one of the things that I initially forgot, and she reminded me of, was that Principal Nance actually has a petition that he'd like to present. So I don't know who would like to accept receipt of said petition, but he has a petition he'd like to present.
So, the last week of school.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the last week of school, we decided to really get our kids civically engaged, and so we sent out a call to action for all of our students to sign a petition in support of Officer Chad, along with our staff. So we collected over 300 students' signatures, and over 100 staff signatures. So on behalf of the entire school district, we want to present this to you, in support of Officer Chad.
Thank you.
I don't think that mic is on, if you wanna.
Of course not.
Like, hit it. Just hit the mic, just hit the mic a little bit, it'll tell you if it's on, just tap it.
You can hang your petitions to the City Clerk.
So the last week of school, we decided to do a call of action to get our students civically engaged into the process politically. And so we know signatures and petitions are a part of that process, and so we sent out a call of action to our entire Urbana High School, and we collected over 300 student signatures and over 100 staff signatures. Also, on behalf of the school district, we're gonna present that in support of Officer Chad as well.
Thank you. Okay, so, good evening. Most of you have seen a lot of this information already, so I will try not to dwell too much, so you don't experience complete death by PowerPoint tonight. A quick, a quick review of the history of SROs. The first modern SRO started in 1993. Since that time, there's been 13, including SRO Burnett and Officer SRO Robinson. They're actually sitting right behind me here, so Chad, if you could stand up and wave your hand hello. And Michelle, if you could do the same, and say hello to the, to the council. In, in late 2019, the school district in the city implemented the fir-, the first full-time SRO program, where one officer was placed in Urbana High School, and the other was placed in Urbana Middle School. What that did was that intergovernmental agreement shifted 100% of the costs that the Urbana Police Department were picking up, to 100% of agreed costs to the actual school district. That, that IGA was in place for about two and a half years, and it expires at the end of this month. The Urbana School District Board of Education approved the IGA before you on May 17th, 2022. And it's now with the city to vote on a resolution to authorize or reject the resolution approving that IGA. Changes. Between the 2019 and 2022 IGA, there's no substantive changes, other than cost sharing. Again, the 2019 IGA, the school district paid 100% of agreed-upon costs, and that included such things as salary, benefits, pension, insurance, et cetera. Also, an annualized equipment reimbursement to the city, and specialized ongoing training. The 2022 IGA alters cost sharing to a 75-25 split. That is far more typical of SRO IGAs than a 100% reimbursement, as we did. So Year One, cost to the school district is $270,000, and the city cost is approximately $92,000. In the packet, there were some financials included. You notice that the financials broke down to, it was 271 and some change. Based on some conversations we had, we've just elected to make Year One just an even 270. Future costs of the, of the increases will be, you know, distributed to the school district, and, and things will be adjusted from there. Again, this is a three-year term, starting July 1, '22, to June 30 of '25. During meetings with city council members before this meeting, there was some requested information. Each one of you should have a packet in front of you, so you don't need to take copious notes. But one of the pieces of information that were requested was arrest information. Just go ahead and leave that up for a second, so you can review it. And as you can see, the difference is between the halftime position model that we previously had and the current full-time SRO model. Also, the council requested a list of training that the SROs attended. These were just the training items that were sort of applicable to the school and their position. There were the other, there were other classes they attended, but these are the ones that were sort of applicable. So that's the high school. This is the middle school SRO. She actually has two pages. Another piece of requested information is what have the, what have the SROs been doing other than sort of taking police reports and arrests and sort of things? These are the other sort of duties as assigned categories, and as you can see, the, the list is pretty long. They're members of the Crisis Intervention Team, the District Crisis Team, the District Threat Assessment Team. You know, they attended expulsion hearings, they helped distribute food and Chromebooks, doing family outreach, home visits. They're a resource for students doing research on papers. There were guest lectures for driver's ed, and of course, resource to students that might be navigating the criminal justice system. Here's some numbers that were requested, that we were able to tease out from some of the logs that the SROs were keeping. Differentiate between, you know, an SRO assist versus a, on a, on a physical altercation versus a physical altercation with an arrest. As you can see, they, they assist and let the school handle in the vast majority of instances. A few instances in the parking lot, they've gotten a number of vaping devices from the kids. Those are both nicotine and cannabis vaping devices. Done a number of welfare checks, and obviously, given quite a few rides home to kids that might need a little bit of transportation help, for whatever reason. Some more activities, runaways. Unfortunately, DCFS referrals is a part of their job. They're required, as is the school district employees, to be mandated, you know, they're mandated reporters. They have to call DCFS on occasion. Restorative circles, legal education, and again, threat assessments. So, you have a few options before you. The first option is to approve the resolution that would provide the Police Department the means to provide SROs. Would also obligate the city to the costs associated with providing those services. The Police Department will continue to have two full-time SROs, and obviously, the Police Department will continue to support the program. This means that the vast majority of the calls at the school would be handled by SROs. That likely means faster response times. And I think probably most importantly is that the SROs will have relationships with the students, staff, parents, and provide a more nuanced service that is, is needed. Next option is you could obviously reject the resolution approving the IGA. That means the Police Department would not be obligated to provide it, and we would have, we would lack the means to provide it. I can tell you, the Police Department will not be returning to the halftime model. In my estimation, that was a bad model in the end, and I don't think it served either party very well. Effectively, a rejection of the IGA is effectively eliminating the SRO program in both schools. Calls for service would be handled per current response protocols with MECAD. That means that there might be delays in response time from patrol officers. That means that there might be delays in response time from patrol officers. And those patrol officers might not have relationships with the students, staff, uh kids, parents. Police department's recommendation is that um, you know, given that we've been involved in the SRO program program for nearly, nearly thirty years um and that we've paid all the associate, associated costs for the tw- first twenty-six years, uh we believe it's important to remain involved in this program, but we also believe that the city should be reimbursed to at least some degree. And the staff recommendation is to approve the resolution authorizing the IGA with Urbana School District one sixteen for the SRO program and cost sharing. Are there any questions?
Chris?
So, uh I was gonna talk a little bit about having an annual report and here you are providing something nearly like that. I mean, I think this is a, a good basis to get start on, started on. One of the big criticisms I heard in the community is that the SRO program has no annual report. And people wanna know what is going on. So it, and I don't wanna add two hours of paperwork to anybody's day. Um so is this kind of the foundation of something that we can expect every year? I don't know.
Yeah, I think, I, and I'm sure the superintendent has some thoughts on this because she was heavily involved in gathering some of these uh statistics. Um you know, I think one of the things that we learned through this process is the sorts of things that we have collected, the sorts of things that we haven't collected, what's the best way to collect it. I can tell you that there was a difference between Chad and Michelle in terms of how they were compiling information. I mean, I was texting with them over the weekend. What about this? What about that? And they're like, just leave me alone. I'm trying to enjoy my weekend. But nonetheless, I mean, there's, there's a pile of information there. So I, I think that probably the best thing for us to do is come up with a tracking mechanism that tracks things equally at both schools. At least that was the lesson learned that I got out of it.
Yeah, and I think um Chad has a um, a screening tool, kind of a spreadsheet that he's created that I think we can replicate at both sites, which basically has a lot of the data that we shared, like home visits, welfare checks. Um one other data point that Officer Burnett collects is um incidents of physical aggression and altercations and how he responds, whether he's involved in that, whether that is something he passes off to admin, because again, we, we don't want, they're not there to break up fights and things like that unless they absolutely have to. Um I know we've talked about searches, um you know, if we have to search for weapons, um things like that specifically. Now that we have the metal detectors though, that would be a little uh kind of exhaustive to add every single search, but I think when we need to go into situations like a lockdown or um we're actually looking for a real weapon based off a report, those would be things that we would track. What are some other? I know you, you mentioned demographic data is, is something else that maybe we could include. We haven't really done that. We've just kinda kept it very comprehensive um and not really drilled down to the student level. That's something else that we could look at doing in the future.
Have you been able to look at the unit four SRO annual report?
Yes, so you sh- that is, I think, a good model.
Yeah.
Or kind of a good template that we could.
Yeah.
Yeah, you shared that with me. I had not done that prior.
I, I appreciate that Officer Burnett's creating spreadsheets and I was, we talked about this earlier, that um things that like, just checking boxes. I, I, I mean, efficient ways that they can, you know, for ten minutes a day, just track what they did today, you know, things like that. But I, I um, I will, I can assure you, the public would like to see and I, and like we talked about, this is to show how good the program is.
Sure.
Not just, you know, how bad things are or whatever.
Great. And I think that's our fear, which we discussed, you know, anytime you're putting that kind of data out for the public.
Right.
Then is it going to turn into the narrative of this is how bad your school is?
Right.
Because you have all these things that are happening, expulsions and, you know, when we're sharing. And we get it. We know our data. We, it's, it's our reality and it, there are things that we need to fix, but when we're putting data out that, you know, the number of students that we're searching are primarily African-American or the number of students that we're expelling are, you know, that is, that's our reality. That's our story and we get that, but
Yeah.
is that what we, you know, is that really what people are looking for when they're looking at an SRO annual report? But we definitely can look at.
Well, I, I see a lot of positive things here too.
Yep.
I didn't know the, the home visits and the rides and, you know, that stuff should be accounted for because that is definitely something we need to see. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, the, the only other piece of data that was kind of a late request and I wasn't able to get to before this meeting was related to use of force. I'll email that to you this week, so I just have to go. I didn't have time to go through two and a half years' worth of data by the time I got the request, but I'll get it to you.
Charisse?
Um I just, I just wanted to say that um I think you guys are doing a great job in coordinating this together. And what I do also remember is when this was discussed and we were putting this together with the previous council, that we did kinda have something of uh where we requested a review of information after a two-year period. So I do remember that. So the public was misinformed regarding that. Um because we did, that was one of the things that we added to the intergovern- uh governmental agreement that I remember specifically.
And that was, that Ms. Hertz, see that is uh and was part of this. And I think the reason we didn't do that was because of COVID. I mean, I hate to um basically, you know, use that as an excuse, but it's a reality. The officer started, uh Michelle started um much earlier than Officer uh Burnett. He started maybe a few weeks before we went into lockdown, so there was really no UHS data. Um and then last year, there was primarily no um data that we could really speak to, other than things like home visits and a lot of the other kinda social supports that are listed were things that uh were primarily happening while we were remote, but in terms of arrests, uh youth assessment, uh visits.
This is the first full school year.
This is our first full year. And unfortunately, it was the end of a three-year agreement, so we're looking forward to the next, hopefully, three-year agreement where we have you know, three years of comprehensive data where we can show improvement and we can show, you know, what we're doing and that what we're doing is having an, having an impact on students. I know one data piece that people, um some of the data are just things we can't quantify, right? We can't quantify like what you heard in some of the citizen statements, the number of things that do not happen um because of their presence, like the number of um altercations that don't happen because Officer Burnett is standing at door one and somebody decides, I'm not gonna come into school and do what I planned on doing today because I know that he's there.
Right.
Um and or, you know, conversely, at the middle school, Officer Robinson. So those aren't things that we can track. Um but we know that that is a real uh part of this program, so.
Well, and I just wanted to say um, to have students come in and, and give their own testimonials about the positive effects and the fact that they feel safe.
Sure.
Um that um for me had a, 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 an impact. And actually, this was kinda almost like a classroom, cause they got to see government at work, really, too. They had, they got to, to, it was a teaching moment for everybody. And so I think that um, I think that there, nothing is perfect and you, and you, you guys have been very honest on what uh situations or what information you, you can perfect or hone in on more. And considering this is something that was just put together a couple of years ago, I think, I think that uh it's been, I think it's been done well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Nice to hear from you all tonight. Um uh some of my questions were, um I agree with the importance of data and being able to show that for the public. Um and appreciate following up on more use of force stuff. I guess I had a question about, cause in the current or previous contract, there is already a piece about any use of force will be um provided to district administration in a written brief summary anytime the SRO is involved in any physical altercation with a district student. Um and so I guess I just, I guess I would have thought that might have been like easier data to pull if there's already a written record of every instance. Or if you could clarify, if that's not the case, it's like an email or a note on your desk that gets like kind of lost in the shuffle. Or if um, I guess I just would expect that there's already kind of a record of that.
And they do collect that? And I don't know, Chad, what is the call?
So u- use of, use of force is typically documented in a police report.
Yes.
And so in order to provide sort of the full understanding of what happened, oftentimes they'll provide the police report. So it's um based on the way use of force is tracked at the police department. It's not a request that we could have come up with this evening. Um we just simply didn't have time to go through two and a half years' worth of data. I think it's a reasonable request, like I told you. I will get it to you this week.
But I guess what I was going to say is in the tool that Officer Burnett keeps track of, like when he has to intervene in a big altercation or a big, you know, group fight or something, he does note like what the, what his response was and how he, what the intervention looked like. Um I know that's not a police report, not the same thing, but I feel like we are tracking the, the involvement in those interactions.
We didn't want the reporting to be duplicative. We didn't wanna have, fill out a police report and then fill out a district form, so oftentimes the police report suffices for, unless it's a low-level incident, which I don't know, I should probably ask people to do it. Is there a form you fill out?
There's not a form to fill out. Typically, if there is a high-level incident, there is a police report generated. And if not, it's, it's listed as handled by, uh handled by.
Happened, happened, yep.
Okay, yeah, I was just bringing up that that's the way it's written in the previous and then in this proposed future contract. So if that's not the way it's operating, that, that might need to be addressed in the contract, or if that is, it sounds like partially the way it is. Um cause it sounds like you're saying that if there is a police report, then that's provided. And if there's not a police report, but there was a use of force, then that's reported in another way?
If there's use of force, it's documented in a police report.
Okay, thank you. Um and I had another question on the aspect of um the hypothetical of the council rejecting this agreement, why the program couldn't continue. I'm just trying to wrap my mind around why UPD could provide the service while paying for part of it, but they couldn't provide the service while it's being paid for by another entity.
Simply put, I do not have the staff. I currently have six vacancies and another six officers that are unserviceable. So there's no way we can absorb two full-time positions.
Okay, I think I'm still not understanding that, cause it seems like the question is the pay issue, right, with the split of the twenty-five percent of the city. And I guess I'm just not understanding why that's tied to the entire program.
Well, the school district, i- in, if this IGA were to be approved, is gonna pair, pay the lion's share of those two positions. If there is no IGA, those two positions disappear. My staffing goes down by two.
Okay, thank you. Um and then my last question was um, I would appreciate any of your thoughts on if it would be possible or what would be any implications of a reduced contract, or if, what are the advantages of three years um versus possibly a shorter contract?
Well, again, we get into staffing implications here. It takes me approximately a year to do a background investigation, hire and train a police officer. So it's a little bit like turning a ship. It doesn't move quickly. So we can't do year-to-year contracts. It's just not feasible because I have to have some semblance of stability in my staffing. I simply have to. I, I could see why you might be interested in a shorter-term contract, but for purposes of long-term planning and staffing, it really does make things incredibly difficult on the police department. Not to mention, it would be difficult on, and I don't wanna speak for the school district, but it would be difficult, difficult for them too.
If reliving this every single year would be very emotional. Um the last few months, and I don't wanna speak for our administrators here, and I should introduce Mr. Cooper is going to be the incoming principal um at Urbana Middle School. Um so if you raise your hand there, so they know who you are. Uh he's been involved in these discussions um ever since he was approved by the board several weeks ago. Um this is stressful for us to have to um think about losing these positions and what it's going to mean in our schools and to have to relive that every single year. Um it, it is, it would be draining. Um our students have been um upset about the fact that this could be a potential reality. Um our staff members, as you, we have about a hundred and fifty staff members um and over a hundred signed the petition. Um it, it, it would be, again, I think, um very difficult for us to, we don't have any problems collecting the data year by year, um doing the feedback, doing our part to make sure that the program is meeting all the goals and um doing what it's supposed to be doing, but to have to come here and before our board and before you every single year and have to worry about whether or not we're going to be able to continue to have this program is, is a lot for me and for my team and for our students and our, our staff.
Yeah, I think it does represent a pretty, pretty significant logistical challenge. To the police department and I would imagine both the high school and middle school in terms of trying to figure out how they're gonna contend with, with situations in the school.
Thank you. And um for reporting, um you said the annual would be good and we've talked about by annual. I just wanted to clarify and it looks like it's written in here that after two years of this agreement, there will be a report and then every year following that. Is that correct?
We will collect data yearly. Um we didn't the last two years because we really uh weren't able to because of COVID, but our, our, uh, our goal is to, every year we'll send out the SRO feedback form. We sent out this spring. Um we'll sh- we'll send that to students, uh to staff. We did not uh collect feedback from parents because uh due to COVID, parents were not really in our building very much this year. Um the only parents who really probably could have filled out, accurately filled out a, a survey form would be the parents who had the most contact with uh both of the SROs. But to have twelve hundred parents, uh you know, indicate their uh interactions with the SRO, they would, they're, that just would not have been good data because they were not really in the buildings and have not had the chance to interact or have a relationship with them. But that is our intent, that we will collect that data every year.
Is, would that be a possibility in the agreement to change to just every one year, or is there a reason why it needed to be two?
I think the way it's written in the agreement is fine. I think we're gonna collect that for, for our own purposes, just to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and, and um, you know, if they're, the nice thing about completing the feedback form is we get good feedback, um kinda that open end piece, so we get some things from our staff uh that we can work toward, kinda like goals for the program. It helps us set goals for what we're gonna do from year to year. So I don't know that we need to change that in the agreement, but that is what we'll do as a district.
Thank you. And then last question was just wondering about your data and kind of as you mentioned with the pandemic and students being out of school a lot. I was wondering if um, you know, the statistics you showed us of students who were charged, if that is just students on school property during school hours and how that relates comparing like before the pandemic when kids were in school, hundred and forty-some days a year versus in the pandemic when they were actually in the school, very less time.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Yeah, I have that.
On how you might feel like that data compares, if it's representative and if it is only students in school, or if we're talking about youth in Urbana who might have arrests outside of school during school hours when they were homeschooling, or kind of where that data is from.
So the data that we shared this year was mostly twenty-one, twenty-two data. Um when we compare that to data that we had pre-program, um it, it pretty much does align. I don't know. I have that, but you don't, I don't think.
I do not have that.
But it just seems like the pandemic is another factor where students might have been in school for half the time. So you could, you know, it looks like there's not been an increase in arrests or charge from kids in school. But it seems like with that other variable, you know, one could say, well, we would expect it to decrease by half, cause they were in school half as much time during that year. So I guess I was just wondering your input on how the data might have been affected by that.
So um I think one big impact is the community violence that we're all experiencing right now, I think, has had a, a significant impact. I mean, we're seeing things in the last two or three years that our community just hasn't dealt with uh prior to um, and I know you shared the arrest records and shots fired and all those things. Um those things trickle in our community into our school community. Um we're, we're aware of the things that happen on the weekend and then those things show up at our door on Monday morning. Um so, you know, just because they're not happening on school property or not happening during the school day, um they do have an impact on, on us. So I don't know how we can tease those numbers apart. I think it, they're all kinda interconnected. Um and, and just the increase in what we're dealing with as a community right now. I do feel um like some of the COVID impact is a real um challenge too. Our students came back um after, especially at our middle school and high school, um of no, no structures, routines, systems. You know, young people crave structures and rules and um they had a whole year without that. And so we did see an increase across all behavioral areas, um not just, you know, incidents related to the SRO, but just basic culture and climate um challenges where a re- Um not just, you know, incidents related to the SRO, but just basic culture and climate um challenges were a reality for us.
Yeah, I, I think social scientists are going to be studying COVID for a long time from a lot of different perspectives. And yeah, maybe the kids were in school half as much, but maybe, maybe the, you know, the situations were twice as intense because of COVID. I saw an article the other day that said mental health amongst teenagers was up, or mental health diagnoses amongst teenagers was up like something like seventy percent because of COVID. So uh you know, I, I'm not sure that Dr. Avery Tatum or I are probably well-positioned to answer some of the questions related to, you know, COVID impacts. We can just say that there's a difference. I mean, there, there's absolutely a difference. And, and in some cases, it's not, not in the good way.
Thank you. And then I guess last question, if you could uh share with us a little bit of what I believe you shared in the board meeting um about other initiatives going on in the school for community, like for school safety, for addressing these issues. It sounded like you mentioned like trauma-informed care and I know you're proposing another kind of mental health center. I didn't know if you could just give us a little summary of the other things that the school district's doing.
Sure, outside of the SRO program. Sure. I know that's not technically what I'm here for, but I'm happy to do that.
Go for it, Jennifer.
Um I, and I'm going to speak for uh Mr. Nance there. Uh we um basically, Mr. Nance is kind of spearheaded. Um and I've been his uh shoulder partner in this effort in anti-violence uh collective, um which we have um gone out into the community and we've asked all of our partners who are part of this work, um who are serving some of our families, uh who are most touched uh by some of the gun violence and some of the incidents of um violence and aggression in the community as well as in our schools. Um so we're partnering with the Community Coalition, um the Youth Assessment Center, probation, um C U Try. And I know I'm going to forget people, Carl. Um some of our religious leaders are part of the group. Um so basically, we've been meeting since April, every Monday morning. Um and we have a core group of high hope students that we are uh targeting. I know that sounds like, that's not a great word, but that we do have a target group of students that we are um basically trying to wrap around um to s- provide um supports in school, provide supports after school, um to support the families in, in kind of a wraparound approach. Um I think all of our different community uh groups are working with the families and we're working with them in school and they're getting all these supports outside of school. Um we have pulled all these people together and said, hey, you know, we're all kind of working harder, not smarter. Let's be together, let's work with these uh families as a unit, as a cohesive group. Um and so that, we're kind of early in that work, but I have already seen um some, some exciting things that are on the horizon for that. So uh we are going to be talking about the Self-Made Kings Group with our board um tomorrow night. Uh Mr. Peppers, I'm not sure if he's over there, uh the Community Engagement Coordinator leads that effort. Um and so we're increasing the number of young men involved in that, um kind of rebranding, you know, a, a little on uh how that program is going to move forward, um more intentionally um with some of the young people that were going to have part of that group and how we will um increase it, I guess, during the school year. And so it won't just be something that they do during the summer months. Um so we're already working on the summer employment, um the activities that those young men will work through. Uh we're incorporating things like trades, um getting some certifications under their belts, um credit recovery. Uh many of them um unfortunately did not um perform well during remote learning and didn't uh earn some of those necessary credits that they need to continue to um graduate from high school. We want to keep all of them at our school, so this, that's kind of the approach. Um the other measure is the um our, uh we're calling it Plan For You, but we're going to come up with a better name. But it is our um uh kind of a, another effort um that will also be something, not an alternative school. I know um that is kind of how it's being. Um it, it isn't going to be an alternative model. It's going to be more of a model that will support students during the school day that are not responding to traditional methods of schooling, which uh several of the same young people that we're uh talking about are struggling in that way. Um they've had a hard time coming back to the traditional school um rules and structures uh after being away from school for a year, fifteen months. Um so this model will be something that they can, um more of that trauma-informed, like you mentioned, therapeutic, restorative. Um we're writing several grants because our, our district cannot fund the necessary mental health uh positions and salaries that would uh go along with uh what would be needed um to kind of provide those uh therapeutic supports during the school day. We have a lot of human capital right now, um but our district, as well as all the districts around us, are experiencing significant shortages, um not just in teachers, but also in mental health providers and social supports, so social workers, um clinical professionals. Um when we have those folks leave, it is really, really hard to replace those positions and we've seen that this year more than ever before. Um so we're really hopeful um that by creating a model where uh the, this, these uh folks will work collaboratively with the school, um be able to be a resource for students during the day and after school, um that we'll have people that are going to be really interested in that and um you know, sign up and join up with us if we can get those grants and get the salaries to uh kind of pay those positions. So we're looking at things like violence interrupters, behavior climate specialists. Um Chief Searls has shared some of the cops grants and some of those school violence prevention grants allow you to write um salaries into those uh three years, um three-year salaries. So we're hoping to really tap into some of that, so.
Thank you so much for that explanation. I know that said was my last question, but last follow-up little question to that one was just um. So it sounds like you've got all, lots of other great programs too for school safety and student well-being. And it sounds like you're saying that the SRO program is either a parallel or a part of that whole picture, if you explain how that kind of fits.
So I think the, uh the, our SRO program is for every single student and every single staff member. You know, we have twelve hundred students at the high school and almost a lo- a thousand at any given time at U M S. So our SRO um is there for school safety for all of us. I think um in our uh feedback, we really uh acknowledge and our, our staff really acknowledge just the presence of having those positions in the building, what it means for people's um, just knowing that they, they just feel safer. And you know, it's a, a, a part of our well-being that they're there. Um so that is, the groups that we're talking about are kind of that high, if you think about the triangle, if you do any kind of mental health, you see that red, yellow, green triangle. We're talking about students kind of at the very tip-top of that triangle who need um very intensive, very uh high-level supports. Um our SROs are there for any situation, every single day, for anyone who needs them. Um and so it isn't just for a targeted group of students, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um so we've had the opportunity to hear a lot of positive things about both of the current SROs. I just really appreciate hearing that feedback and especially the opportunity. Um I had a chance to connect with the council members who were able to visit with the school and really appreciate that opportunity. But we also talked a little bit about programs that haven't been so successful. Um it was great seeing the, the trainings that the current SROs have received. Is there any kind of standardization because turnover happens, right? We, we all do our best to keep folks, but like if one of the current SROs were to leave, what does that baseline training look like so that we can continue to see that kind of positive outcome?
So I actually, I actually think it starts before the training. I think it starts in the selection process. You know, this is something that I think Chandra and I were talking about and Sharice. We were talking about the selection process and how critical, critically important that is. You know, you really want to pick people um that are well-positioned to do certain jobs, right? Get the right people on the bus in the right seat. Um it is, it is critically important that we find people that have a passion for this sort of work, um and that it's in their heart. Um you know, it takes all sorts of people to run a police department and to run a school district, right? And so I think, I think really just finding the key people and putting them in those, in those key spots is super important. So I think it starts with selection. From there, you know, in terms of training, obviously, they have to have experience as a police officer, right? They have to have, they have to understand the fundamentals of uh criminal investigation. They have to have a good understanding of, of case law specifically related to schools, because there is particular case law related to schools. Um they, they have to have a good experience um teaching and coaching people, right? So there's all these different layers that I think really comes into play. And so I think when you're talking about, about sort of the, the whole picture, you really have to start with sort of the whole person. There's, we can send all sorts of people to all sorts of classes, right? But it's that, it's that underlying, under, underlying experience of sort of where their heart and soul is, coupled with their experience that I think is probably the most critically important thing. If you were to say, okay, Rich, um what's your succession planning here? Uh I got to be honest with you, I don't have much because these two are unicorns. And I mean that from the heart of hearts. I, I, I mean, they really believe in the program and they really believe in sort of what they're doing. And that is really hard to replicate with somebody who's just like sort of eh, you know, it's just, it's a, I want to try something new, right? So um yeah, there's, I mean, the National Association of School Resource Officers has a myriad of, of training courses that we can send officers to. Um but I think it's just sort of all the other things that are probably most important.
And, and I do appreciate that we are part of the interview process, um if and when that were to happen.
Follow-up question, thank you.
That, it won't happen anytime soon, but if, if, if it were, um we have, you know, our administrators were part of that process when we hired um the officers that we had, so.
Yeah, the school district gets a vote in the beginning and they get a vote all, all through the program. You know, if, if Jennifer were to call me and say, Rich, this just isn't working, she can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Avery Tatum, for being here tonight and all of your staff for being here tonight. Um something Grace said um made me want to make sure I'm remembering things correctly with regard to the data that we've collected. We've been in school all hundred and eighty days this year, right, in person? And last year, we were in school about half the year, right, so.
Well, not as many students attended in person though, but yes.
Right. But some students came back in person because they needed it earlier. And, and so, so when we talk about the last two years, we have a full year of students being in school and about half, a third of a year of students being in school. So those numbers do reflect students being in school.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
No, thanks for clarifying that.
Mary Alice?
It seems like everybody has gone through their questions. Is now an appropriate time to make a motion?
Questions if you want to take the chair?
Sure, I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Chandra.
Okay, so um my question would be, you talk a lot about taking the feedback and making appropriate changes. And you gave me the opportunity to look through the um sort of qualitative data from the surveys. Um and so, and I myself was able to go to the high school and I heard a lot about Mr. Burnett, Officer Chad, you know, what a great um SRO he is for the high school. Um and it, it seems very opposite amongst the, the U M S staff in the survey. Um and so I wonder, like, what are the, 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 I guess, the, how are you taking the staff feedback and improving the relationship with that SRO?
Good question. And so Mr. Cooper and I have already met with um Officer Robinson and her supervisor to talk about next year, um as I shared with you, and you know, it would be an appropriate time to share with the council. I think at the, at Urbana Middle School, we experienced, you know, we talked about that COVID impact. Um it was even more so heightened um with our, you know, eleven, twelve and thirteen-year-olds. Um so just the intensity of the behaviors uh was significant. Um and our intention as a district is never to, uh is not to use our SROs to be punitive. You know, we, we just, our, our goal is never to be arresting students, walking students out the door. Um you know, that's just not our goal. As, but we know that does happen. So um we started the year, I feel like um giving students maybe more chances and more opportunities, uh making that excuse of, well, they've been away from us for over a year, um some of us longer than that. I mean, we had seventh and eighth graders who, you know, we were expecting them to perform and act like seventh and eighth graders when they really, uh the maturity level just wasn't there. And so um that was a challenge in and of itself. And then you pair that with um not uh really wanting to have our SRO um being punitive and being, you know, her, her role there was to establish relationships and get to know students and um for them to get to know her, uh because many of them had not been in school in person and had no relationship. So um it was a challenge at the beginning. I think um we probably should have um kind of been a little more intentional around getting some of those students who were having the most significant behavioral challenges, um more supports uh at Youth Assessment and getting them into some of those um spaces where they could be getting some of that community help. But again, uh we were doing whatever we needed to do at the school level, uh restorative practices, doing a lot of circles, having a lot of conflict mediations, trying not to involve uh Officer uh Robinson in that space because we were just the optics of it, right, of not wanting her involved in every single uh fight or every single interaction. So by the second half of the year, um you know, as an afterthought, we thought maybe this wasn't the right approach. Maybe we should have had her more intentionally involved in some of those spaces. So the behaviors continued to increase. Um and unfortunately, um it, it just didn't get better. And so we do have a plan. I think the uh feedback that you saw uh was, was, was great feedback for us around visibility, um being in some of those restorative spaces. If you saw the slides that Rich shared, uh she did do a lot of circles. She was in a lot of um conflict mediations, but we could double that or triple that or quadruple it and have her be in even more of those spaces next year. Um I think uh Mr. Cooper has a real intentional plan on how we can uh right away address some of these um challenging behaviors that we're seeing with more uh structures, more systems, even more restorative uh practice approaches, um and involving Officer Robinson from the very beginning in those. Um and if we have to uh take a student during the day and take them to the Youth Assessment Center, we don't see that as a, um that's not an arrest to us, that's not, you know, punitive. That's a way to get that student help and to get that family some of the supports that maybe they need. Um so I think our approach this year is going to be a little more intentional in doing that and allowing her to, as an officer, um do what needs to be done to really kind of address some of those things that we um didn't address right away. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I feel like we do have a good plan. Um Officer Burnett is a great model. I mean, you've seen his feedback, right? So he, there are a lot of things that he's doing really well um that we can replicate. Now, comparing high school students and middle school students is very, very different. Um the maturity level is very, very different. The conversations that Officer Burnett is able to have with a sixteen-year-old, um those don't play out the same uh as a conversation you're going to have with a twelve-year-old who's um in the middle of something that they shouldn't be in the middle of. So um those are challenges as well, but.
And another thing I saw in the feedback is a lot of the teachers don't understand the role of the SRO.
Sure.
So I also think that it probably um would be helpful to administration to have clear and cut duties of the SRO and, and have that communicated to the staff so that, you know, they understand like if, you know, the SRO is doing something that they shouldn't be doing or, you know, God forbid, they are able to call that out as well.
I agree. And I think the um current U M S administration had never worked with an SRO before. And so I, I do feel that was something that maybe we could have done better, right? So that is a good feedback point. Um the nice thing about Mr. Cooper is um in the position that he's been in for several years. He's had a lot of experience working with um SROs in his current job um and has worked with some phenomenal SROs that I think he has some great ideas on how we can make our program even more robust and do some of those things that you're talking about, so.
And I, you mentioned the restorative circles and such. How effective have they been? Um especially, and did they include this year the SRO or you plan to include the SRO in the future?
You have that in your slide. I saw that. Um I'm pretty sure Michelle participates in circles at the middle school, right? Yep.
Yeah, it says seven restor- restorative circles. I just didn't, okay. So yeah, they were involved.
There's some, um you know, we have some groups of students that have had some, um you know, not appropriate interactions with one another. So I think Michelle has established relationships with those young people, though mostly seventh graders. They're all going to be back at U M S uh next year as eighth graders, so we have another opportunity um to really uh help kind of remediate some of those things and help them grow and mature and make better choices. And so now that she has that relationship, it'll be a little easier as eighth graders to really involve her in those circle spaces more. But yeah.
And so you mentioned that Officer Chad could be the model. Um is there opportunity for the two S- Is there opportunity for the two SROs to come together, say, on a weekly basis, to sort of, you know, exchange ideas, points, and, you know, bounce, be like a, a sounding board off one another, because I'm, I'm sure, not, if they're both sort, if she's sort of new to the school, then, you know, she, you know, may need some pointers, and like you said, high school and middle school is vastly different.
Very different.
But, you know, him being a former teacher, there may be some secrets that he knows that she may not be aware of.
And I think they collaborate, I don't wanna speak for them, but I, I think they collaborate quite a bit now and, you know, kind of tag team, and, and I don't know if you guys wanna speak to that or not, but.
We communicate with what's going on in our perspective.
Yep.
So, we do talk about the different things that we do, it's just, there is a vast difference.
Excuse me, could you talk into the microphone so the folks at home can hear? Thank you.
Sorry about that. Is this better?
Is it on?
It's on.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Kinda soft spoken to begin with. We, we talk regularly about the, our schools, it, it's something that we normally do, we talk about the situations that arise and how, how they're handled and how they're not handled, we, we try to figure out ways in which we can improve on those things, obviously, but there is a huge difference between a middle school student and, and a high school student. I've had the opportunity to teach elementary-aged kids, I've taught junior high kids, I've coached junior high kids. So, their, their brain doesn't work like a 16, 17, 18-year-old high school. The impulsiveness in a 11 or 12-year-old, it, it's hard to backtrack that, if, you know, to, to redirect that behavior. So she, I'm gonna just say that she has a very tough task compared to what I do. I think my job's relatively easy compared to what Michelle's trying to do, and I, I think she does a very good job of what she does, 'cause I don't wanna be the one, I don't want you guys modeling my behavior up here, because that's just not me. I mean, I, I treat these kids and the students in the building the way I would want my students and my, my own kids to be treated. So, what, what I do is I communicate with them, I talk to them, I don't demand anything from them, but I ask of them to do what's appropriate. And going through those types of behaviors and, and just showing those, say, hey, could you do this for me, not, do this for me, you know, do it this way, or, you know, why don't we try this? You know, just, just giving those examples in the hallway, not overreacting to something small, not letting them bait me into an altercation, just knowing that that's what they're trying to do at times, you know, helps, is gonna help the process for me and just the staff in general. I mean, we, we work well together, I know when I'm needed, I know when I'm not needed. There's an altercation and there's, I'm just gonna say, you have a fight in a high school, you have a fight amongst two people, you're gonna have 60 people in the hallway, it's not two people. You have 15, 20 cell phones in a circle and 60 people right there. Staff may be doing what they need to separate the issue, but you've gotta move all parties away. So, that's where I come into, my role comes into the fact that I've just helped get people back to where they're supposed to be, make sure that this one problem doesn't start another problem. And, and we work well in knowing that if I'm close, and I'm the first one there, and I have to separate kids, they, they typically respond to me, they move back, because they know what I expect of them, I've communicated that with them already. They know how I'm gonna handle a situation, because I've communicated that with them. So, it's, it's just a matter of communication to me, being respectful to them, I let them know upfront, hey, I'm not gonna disrespect you, I'm not here to hurt you, I'm not here to harm you, I'm here to help you, and we just go from there. It's just been, it's been an evolution from day one. I mean, there was hesitancy of the students with me in the building, but the, the turn throughout this, this particular school year in itself, it's, it's been great. I mean, fist bumps, high fives, nicknames, all sorts of things come out, you know, every day. So, it, it's just, it's just time, and I think knowing, you know, being at the door in the morning, knowing who comes in maybe a little bit tired and say, hey, did you get breakfast this morning, or did you not get breakfast this morning? Knowing your students in the building and what they may need that particular day helps, helps our job. I mean, so, just seeing them on a daily basis and, and getting to know their mannerisms and behaviors, that helps you in your position. So, I mean, as long as you can learn those things and, and know who, what you got and what you're dealing with, your job's not gonna be that hard. I mean, you have difficult situations, but you can make them easier, you know, proactively we can make them easier. And that, as a staff and as a district and as police department, I think we all work well together, we all communicate well together, and, and that's something that needs to continue, in my opinion. I mean, I'm strongly for working for these kids, 'cause I wanna be in the building and help them, so.
And Chandra, I think you hit the nail, I think at UMS, it is different, one, as Chad said, it is, just the difference in age and maturity is, is just, just huge. But I think moving forward, the responses in the open-ended feedback that you're referencing, there are a lot of positives there, too, and I think the staff members who had an opportunity to actually get to work with Michelle and see her in that space, building relationships with students, had a lot of positive things to say, but again, we need to better brand the program at the UMS level, which, I mean, you've, you've mentioned that, and I agree with it 100%, that all of the staff need to know what her role is and what she's there for, what she's not there for. I think they understand what she's not there for, but we need to make sure that they understand how they can utilize her strengths and some of the things that she does really well, too. And, and Mr. Cooper has a plan for that, so.
I, I know that you all have a time limit and quite a bit, quite a bit of things left on the agenda, I do wanna add one last thing, unless there's more questions, and this is a bit personal and a bit professional. You know, one of the things that sort of struck me when Chad was talking about is he was talking about sort of what kind of a positive year he had. And what I'm hearing as a parent of a student in high school, she graduated, from a school without an SRO, I can tell you that, that my child's description of what the school was like was vastly different than what I've heard Chad say and some other students say. So, it, it was just sort of remarkable to me, sort of seeing it from both of those perspectives, that there was, there was a clear separation between sort of the Urbana experience and the Champaign experience this year.
Are there any more questions?
Would you like the chair back, Chandra?
Yeah.
I relinquish the chair.
Thank you. Are there any more questions?
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I move that we send a city council with a recommendation for approval, Resolution Number 2022-06044R, resolution approving and authorizing the School of Resource Officer Program intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and Urbana School District 116.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Jaya?
Thank you. I wanna say again, I really appreciate the offer to come visit the schools, I wasn't able to attend, I was out of town last week, but like I said, I did have the chance to, to connect with council members who were able to do so, and was catching up on all the emails. I also just appreciate the level of information that has been provided to us. I would've liked to see information from the city earlier, so we knew this was coming, 'cause I, I hear that concern that's being raised of the stress that that has been caused. We didn't know this vote was coming until two weeks ago, right? So I think some of it is about more transparent communication, so we can answer these questions before it comes up for a vote and hopefully not cause all this stress for folks. So I think that's one thing I would like to see, like I said, I really appreciate this level of information that's in this presentation, and there can be lots of reasons for, for why things don't get put in front of us sooner, but having those opportunities to hear this feedback, to see more about the individuals who are in this role, these roles, was really important, because there is a lot of research that suggests that SROs are not a good option, right? That they do increase incarceration of youth, especially youth of color, and so having the opportunity to say, okay, that's some of the national data, that's, those are some of the examples of when things are not working, but let's look at what's working well here, right? And I think, you know, we've had lots of emails from, from community members, and often there is that question of, do you have kids in these schools? And I don't, I've been an educator and had the opportunity to work in a lot of the Urbana schools, but I think to Principal Nance's point, these are everyone's kids, right? Anyone who lives in Urbana, certainly anyone who's up here, we are responsible for these children as well, and so having the information to make an informed decision is much appreciated and I think is absolutely vital. I think that having a mechanism where we're, we're having that annual report be really important, again, really appreciate seeing this information, and the community needs to see this information. Because again, if you're just looking at the research about national programs, there's a lot of negative out there. So I think continuing to make sure that the community more broadly is aware of what is, you know, when we talk about this, like, we only talk about what's going wrong, right? But let's talk about what's going right, and there's a lot of research that also shows that positive interactions, and Rich, we've talked about this a lot, is that the police department doesn't often have those opportunities to have positive interactions with the community, but when they do, it builds stronger and safer communities, because that trust is there, that understanding of student or parent behavior is there, and so ideally, that will reduce the, you know, use of force or other situations that might escalate. So, again, I really appreciate all the information, all the time that everyone has put into making sure that this was such a fruitful discussion, and I would just like to continue to see feedback on how the program is going if it gets approved tonight.
Chris?
Yeah, thank you. I wanna thank Angie Franklin, the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources at Unit 116, for organizing the meetings at the high school and making the invitation for city council members to learn more about the SRO program. I'd like to thank Superintendent Ivory Tatum for taking time out of her schedule to meet with council members and provide information and answer our questions. Thanks goes to Principal Nance for his refreshing energy and optimism. I'd like to thank the faculty members who met with me and gave me their heartfelt testimony, and I'd like to especially thank the high school students who told me in no uncertain terms, this SRO program, this particular SRO officer is good and working. Officer Burnett, you should know that your students served and protected you from critics like me, okay? They spoke very highly of you, and whatever is happening in the school, it is something the students that I talk to wanna keep and have around. I've been told that if I vote for these SROs tonight, I can forget about winning the next election. Maybe so, you know, that is the voter's perfect right. And to be honest with you, this is not my favorite vote, favorite thing to vote for. This is not funding for a multimedia studio where radio shows and video shows and digital photography and website development and web journalism and standard journalism and media-making is taught. This is not funding for an all-purpose industrial arts workshop where vocational training and auto mechanics, carpentry, plumbing, electrical work, concrete skills, and whatever other trades could be useful to learn. This is not funding for better-equipped science labs, and most importantly, this is not funding for additional staff and faculty, particularly faculty of color, to reduce class sizes, deliver more personal instruction, provide remedial catch-up work where it's needed, and provide group counseling and achieve better academic and job-training outcomes. I suppose if I really wanna lose the election, I'll try to raise taxes to fund all that, right? You know, if the mechanisms that we have today were in place at the high schools back in the 70s when I was in school, I would've caught several cases, nothing violent, mind you, but the stuff I thought was so funny would've surely had me handcuffed, taken to the youth detention center, and I would've been prosecuted by Tom DeFonis and jailed by Judge Bob Steidman. So let's be on the same page, I think we all are, we don't want that for our students, and I hope you can understand my reluctance to turn youthful mistakes into permanent criminal records. But I recognize, this ain't the happy-go-lucky 70s where we had animal house and food fights. Things have changed. You know, we, we had maybe a handful of fistfights, nobody was playing with weapons, and we certainly didn't have social media to start arguments and all that nonsense. So, things have definitely changed. And this challenge is gonna be, Dr. Ivory Tatum, is that when you come back to these chambers again to ask for ARPA money, what wraparound services and what positive initiatives can we provide for the troubled students like me to turn them 180 degrees around and head it back in the positive direction? That's gonna be far more important. And Dr. Ivory Tatum, I would invite you back here a third time to hold me accountable, you know, and ask what economic development is there for your graduates? Where are the jobs? Where are the small business loans? Where are the educational scholarships? Where is the affordable housing? Where is the workforce development? And where is the affirmative minority contract hiring? We're in this together. And what I also told the News Gazette Saturday, they didn't have a chance to print, is that law enforcement by itself cannot and will not solve all the problems we have. We need all hands on deck, all perspectives at the table, and all ideas to consider, and this American Rescue Plan money gives us a chance to try a variety of things. So out of respect for Principal Nance, the faculty members, and especially the students and all you tonight, I'm gonna be voting for this, and I will also vote for this out of respect for Officer Chad Burnett, who is trying the very best he can. And all I can say in closing is Godspeed, Officer Burnett, and keep up the good work.
Mary Alice?
I have to follow that? Really? Okay, I didn't, I didn't, that was very nice, Chris. I will just say that. I, I do wanna thank Dr. Franklin, who provided the opportunity for myself and, and Chandra to sit down with staff and, and also with students and hear directly from them what a kind of impact this program has on them. And, and the two things that I kinda wanted to bring up, the first one, from the administration really talked a lot about, things happen outside of school that are gonna be impacted in school. And so one of the examples that the principal gave was if there is an altercation that happens over the weekend, then Officer Chad will contact the administration, you guys will come up with a plan on Monday morning, so you can be right out there at the beginning to have a plan on how you're gonna address the situation. That's being proactive, not reactive. So that really struck home with me. But more importantly, what really struck home with me was the students, what they've said tonight, what they've said in those meetings. There were a lot of people who honestly said that people, that Officer Chad trusted what they said, listened to what they had to say, didn't make judgments, wanted to hear their side of the story, and they thought that he was part of the family. And, and really, they also said that they didn't really think of him as a police officer first, they thought him as part of the UHS family. So, I really can't follow that, Chris, but thank you for that, I just wanted to give you my thoughts. I'll be voting for the SRO program, and I appreciate everybody's input and work, because this is a lot of work, and to do this every year, I don't recommend it. Thank you.
Sharice?
Of course, I'm gonna piggyback what they said, but the other thing I, I wanna say is that I attended all Urbana schools. I, I don't know if anybody else here on the city council is from Urbana, born in Urbana, raised in Urbana.
Police chief.
I know he is.
But I'm not on the council.
Not on the council.
No, but I just, I say that because, yeah, and that's, and this is who I wanted to talk to, her. Because, and Officer Chad, nothing from you, okay? I'm not trying to take anything from you. I sub, I subbed in middle school for years, and I wouldn't dare go to high school to sub, 'cause I would've lost my job. But, but, and I say this because the one thing I realize is how difficult a stage in life that is, having gone it, through it myself, and, but also having to try to herd those hormones that those babies have and the changes that they're going through with their maturity. with their maturity at that age, from sixth grade up through eighth grade. And they're, they're really feeling themselves out. And I want to give you credit for being able to do that, okay? That is something that is a very difficult thing to do, to, to project authority about something, you know, because they think, those babies think that we just came out the womb at 35. And seriously, that's how they, that's been my experience. I'm a qualified dad. That was my experience. And I would, I always, always had to tell them, you know, I used to be 13 too. You know, I know what you're going to try to do because I was 13 too. And that's a difficult age to, to round up, to help them through. And let alone coming off of a pandemic where they haven't had that structure for a couple of years almost, you know? Structure that they were, when they, when they, last time they went to school, they were in elementary school, and then they, they show up and they're in junior high. And just all around, just the, I was just, like I said before, so impressed with how the students that came here to speak on your behalf and the impression that you've made, you've managed to make on them. And I'm sorry, Ms. Franklin, I did not get to, did not get to meet with, with any of you guys. I'm a primary caregiver for my mom, so that's a difficult schedule for me to make. But I did want to say that I've been there, done that anyway. And having been there, done that at, when we called it Urbana Junior High, and Fisher Junior High, actually, was what it was when I went there. And, and the, and the high school. It's, and then having experienced it actually as, as an educator, it is a very difficult job for the, both of our SROs. You have to know what edge you're going to walk. And I, I just want to say, I'll be, I'll be voting for, to renew this program, no problem.
All right, thank you. I won't thank everyone individually again, but I do appreciate everyone coming out, and of course, the students too, for coming out and speaking out because we should be listening to them. I'm very fortunate that I have a 19-year-old son who's spent 13 of his years in Urbana School District. So I'm familiar with the schools from that perspective. But I also am fortunate to be married to someone who has almost 30 years teaching in Urbana School District. And a few years ago, when there was a concern about our neighborhood schools, I got involved as a community organizer to preserve our neighborhood schools. And so I have a lot of connections in this community, both to the school district and to people in the school district and to parents and to teachers. And I knew when I was elected to this position that this conversation was coming. In fact, my first conversation with Chief Seraphin about what I needed to talk about coming to city council was the SRO program and what we could do about it. We talked about this a little bit, to soften, soften it because of the situation of how an officer in a uniform in a squad car with a gun makes people feel, some people feel. And so it's been on my mind. I knew, I knew this was coming. And so people approached me, people talked to me about how to address this when it came. And I got to say, I'm not getting the same kind of conversations that Chris is getting. We have a challenge in this community, and I learned this in other parts of my service, is that we at times try to paint what we're doing locally with a national brush. And we don't look close enough at what we're accomplishing here, which in many cases is phenomenal because of the community that we have here. Principal Nancy, you said exactly right. We have one school district. We have a lot of elementary schools, but we have one middle school. We want to have one high school. That's where we can invest to have the most impact. We talked about the ARPA funds a couple of weeks ago, about advanced programs to look at. The school district in my mind was a no-brainer because we have one public school district. And it impacts all of our kids that need help, need services, need support. So it goes without saying that I am going to support this because we have, what we have many times is a program in Urbana, in this community, that is trying to do the right thing with the right people, trying to do the right thing. And we need to recognize that, and we need to support it. We have to keep an eye on it because things change, people change. But we, now we know what we want, and we can keep aspiring to keep it going on. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again for all the input that we heard. I just wanted to share a few thoughts here. I believe that our schools and the safety and education of the children of our community is profoundly important. And I do think that the schools are, you know, wonderful way to reach the youth of the community because it's like the connection hub for them. I think this is a big and complicated decision for me thinking about making this. I philosophically believe that we need to invest in resources for safety and well-being in schools other than police support or SROs. I think that coordinated safety training, more counselors and community leaders in the schools, some of the programs you mentioned with us about, you know, the anti-violence and violence interrupters programs. I think that those could be as or likely more effective than SROs for safety with potentially less harm to students with involvement with law enforcement for school-related issues. I, again, think this is a unique and complex situation in Urbana schools. I agree that this does seem to be a unique situation, different from comparing it to other school districts or national kinds of anecdotes or data. To clarify, if people are asking, I don't have a child in the school district or current connections to Urbana schools, not since I attended Head Start in Urbana in the 90s. I attended and worked in Champaign schools for many years, and also attended and worked in schools in other states for quite a few other years, schools with and without SROs and metal detectors in different parts of the country. I still have a parent teaching in Champaign schools and do volunteer work that involves Urbana students. So I definitely understand, you know, the panic that can ensue when you hear that there was a gun incident at one of the schools where a child or parent or loved one or anyone is a part of. So I think that the safety is absolutely important. And it sounds like these officers have made positive relationships in the schools. I think that community leaders with connections to students has a huge impact on safety. I think that person doesn't necessarily need to be an armed police officer. And I understand that these officers have become part of the school community is what I'm hearing. I think the survey and anecdotal data support the program from majority of the respondents, from the students and staff. Just did want to point out that it was not unanimous. There's always a split and a spectrum of opinions on the matter, that there was a percentage from just a few percentage to maybe higher, depending on which school, of some feedback that was in disagreement with feeling safer with the SROs and things. So I definitely understand that the majority is in support, and just wanted to vocalize too, that it was not 100% as anything rarely ever is. I think that if outside law enforcement does need to be involved, I think it makes sense and it does seem safer to have a trained and familiar SRO be on the scene rather than an outside officer. That's one of the points that I do think really makes sense. And I think that the overall thing is that, you know, in general, I think I and a lot of other people want to avoid any increase in legal charges for students due to the presence of an SRO that would otherwise just be a school incident and not involve that. And it seems like what you've shown us with the data and the anecdotes is that this is not the case and that there hasn't been what we can see from a decrease or an increase or major decrease from this SRO program. So I think that this is a hard decision. I am more assured of this program after learning more about it and seeing some of the data and hearing more of the stories. And I think that I will have to trust the request and the management of the school district on this. I'm encouraged also by the other programs outside of the SROs, and I think that community support is essential. And again, it sounds like these officers have become a part of the school community. So I think that's kind of my aspect for support, more than just an SRO program in general. But with you saying that this is an important part of your safety plan in the school community, I think is the piece that convinces me and that we really need to listen to those most impacted. I definitely appreciate hearing the stories and the opinions of the students and staff and parents here. So I think that I will go in support of the majority request from the students and staff that we've heard from in these efforts. And I look forward to future ways that we can also support the wonderful work that you're doing in the schools and connecting the youth and making it a safer place.
Yes, the chair recognizes Chandra.
So we've heard a lot of feedback, a lot, a lot of feedback. And I appreciate all the time that staff and superintendent and the police chief have taken to get us up to speed on this program. I am a research person, like school board member Exum said in her public input. I look at the data, and like Jay said, the data across the country says that SROs are not helpful. 32% of students of color are more likely to be arrested by an SRO. There are 14 million students across the country who are closer to handcuffs than they are to mental health professionals in the schools. And so that's, that's exactly what I didn't want to see in these schools. And so I'm glad that I got the opportunity to come in and talk to students and staff because had I not, I definitely would have been a no vote on this. I, and also the fact that you mentioned that there were other programs that will be happening that will create a more robust school mental health program. I'd like to see both options. And I understand that, you know, kids are wiling out these days, and, you know, they need a strong arm as well as a soft touch. So I'm glad that there are both opportunities here because had there not been, I definitely would have been a no vote, especially looking at, you know, some of the comments. Like Grace said, it wasn't 100% yes and it wasn't 100% no. But I, after speaking with Officer Chad, you know, hearing his story and all of that, I, I believe that he is there for the students. And so it is definitely a hard decision because, you know, as an African-American woman, I, I don't, I have not had positive interactions. My family has not had positive interactions with the police. So it's not inherent for me to support, you know, anything I do, especially being that close to children who are impressionable. So I, again, I thank you for all the work that and the time you've put into showing up to these meetings, giving these presentations, you know, the one-on-ones. I, you know, I came to the school because I wanted to hear for myself right from the horse's mouth. I didn't want, you know, skewed surveys or, you know, whatever to just be the only data points I looked at. So I appreciate all of that.
Would you like the chair back?
Sure.
All right, I relinquish the chair.
Is there any other discussion? If not, will the clerk call the rule? Yes.
This is actually a resolution.
Of voice, okay.
Yes.
So all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes.
Can I move for recess? Five, maybe? I don't know if the rest of the council is listening, but...
We're taking a five-minute recess. Okay, the next items on our agenda is from community development. Brayden, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me okay with my mask on. Before you tonight are nine resolutions approving funding agreements for social service agencies that submitted applications to the city's 2022-2023 Youth Services Grant Program. Staff recommends funding these nine programs in fiscal year 2022-2023 at the amounts listed on the chart. You'll see there, there was the original requested amount that the agency submitted for, and then the recommendation on the right-hand side of the chart. This chart is included in your packet in Attachment 1, and more details about each program can be found in Attachment 2. The total of funding available for this grant cycle in 2022-2023 is $100,000. And as you can see on the chart there, $25,000 of this pool comes from the Community Development Block Grant, and $75,000 comes from the general fund. And this amount is consistent with the previous fiscal year, 2021-2022, and it was also consistent with the city's contribution in fiscal year 2020-2021. Through the Youth Services Grant Program, the city seeks to fund local agencies that support the health, wellness, and opportunity for Urbana youth from early childhood to 22 years of age with the goal of having a lasting impact on the community. So here's a timeline of the, of the application process for the 2022-2023 cycle. The grant application portal opened on March 7th. Staff, and then a TA, Technical Assistance Session was held for all interested applicants via Zoom on Friday, March 11th. During that Technical Assistance Session, we walked interested applicants through the program, the different requirements that we have, and also how to navigate the grant portal where they would be applying. So staff solicited applications through a variety of different means. We sent out information through local media outlets as well as countywide social service groups such as the Champaign County Continuum of Service Providers to the Homeless and the Champaign County Human Services Council. We also posted information about this program and the application process on the city's website and also on the city's social media accounts. The application deadline was April 8th. And at that time, in total, city staff received applications from nine agencies to fund 11 programs. On April 19th, those applications were reviewed by an internal grant review committee, and that was made up of Councilmember Mary Alice Wu, Community Engagement Coordinator Lamont Peppers, interim Community Development Director Sheila Dodd, and myself. And then those funding recommendations that we developed at that internal committee, we took to the Community Development Commission on April 26th for their, for their approval. So here is the tool that we, that the committee utilized to evaluate the grant applications that we received. This is also in your packet, so you can take a look at that for reference. So this just shows how sort of the criteria we were looking for in their applications. And then, you know, we would go through and attribute a score to each category. This tool was provided to all applicants ahead of time. They had access to it during the Technical Assistance Session, and it was also posted on our website. So if they had any questions, they could go back and reference it as they were developing their applications. The committee was really looking at four key areas of the applications as we were going through them. Like I said, we received applications to support 11 programs, and they were all very worthwhile programs. But there were some key indicators that we were looking for as we were reviewing them. We were looking for the financial health of the agency as determined through their audits or financial statements, their ability to support the program beyond just this next fiscal year of funding. Again, that lasting impact was something that was really important to us. We wanted to know that they would have capacity to continue the program long-term. Their capability to increase services to Urbana residents, that was a really important one as well, increasing services rather than just replacing services that were already in existence. And then we were also looking at just their general capacity to manage a grant program as described in their application. At this time, the committee does not recommend funding two programs in the fiscal year 2022-2023 cycle. And those two programs that we are not recommending, those are also included in that chart so you can see what their original request was. And there were a variety of factors. I mean, this was not an easy decision. Like I said, there were a lot of, you know, very worthwhile programs. But there were several key factors that we were looking for when we, when we made the decision not to recommend those two programs for funding. Either they really weren't filling an existing gap that we were seeing in the community, or they were not increasing services to Urbana students. Other agencies didn't provide some of the required financial documentation that we were asking for, or they were just, didn't, weren't able to demonstrate their ability to successfully manage the grant program. Funds for this program have previously been set aside and approved by council. A total of $100,000 from those two funding sources will support this year's program. And again, that's $75,000 from the general fund and then $25,000... thousand dollars in community development block grant funding. Um, there will be no additional in, a fiscal impact on the city. The Youth Services Grant Committee and the Urbana Community Development Commission recommend that the city council approve the proposed, um, youth services grant funding allocations to support these eight agencies and nine programs in the amounts that are provided in the recommended table. So I'll take any questions you have.
Grace.
Thanks for the presentation on this. Um, again, I think going back to, you know, youth, supporting youth services and community-based projects being a very important and being one of our goals here. Um, I was wondering, so I'm feeling very confused about this timing and the budgeting of it. I was trying to find the last one because I feel like we just approved the last round from twenty-one, twenty-two recipients. And I'm confused with the budget, how this is coming out of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget that hasn't been approved yet, right? And it seems like it's been less than a year from the last recipients, and I'm just confused on that overall process. If you could clarify.
Yeah, so to clarify the first part of your question, um, you did just back in February approve the, um, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two cycle. We were, we were delayed. Typically, we would have preferred to have launched that last spring, but because this was a new program we were developing and also with COVID, there were some disruptions. We were delayed in getting that launched. Um, so the, the funding that you approved back in February, that was for July one, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, up this upcoming June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. So those agencies, they were able to spend that funding back to July one, twenty-twenty-one up through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. This cycle is for July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. So it's the, it's the next year. Um, and the funding, so that twenty-five thousand dollar community development block grant funding, that, the, that's part of the social service funding that was approved in the annual action plan that I presented a couple of weeks ago. So if you remember, I, I presented on that annual action plan, which is our CDBG and our home funding. So there's, that twenty-five thousand dollars comes from that public service portion of that, which is twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, in terms of the general fund, um, that might be a little bit outside of my ex- area of expertise, um, in terms of how that's budgeted, but, um, in the past, this is the site, this is the process that we have used, um, just to, you know, to make sure we have that dedicated funding for these social service programs.
Thank you. And then I was wondering about the application process, um, if you could share some insight on that, like, for example, it seems to me that like one month turnaround is pretty short. And again, just having this turnaround so quick from the last years, um, and any insight or things with possibilities of collaborating with the applicants to possibly address some of the issues before, uh, it's too late, as we've heard from some members of the public with trying to apply and some of kinds of the issues going through that process.
Absolutely, yes. So there was a quick turnaround and again, going forward, that will not be how things operate in the future. That was, again, because of COVID and because this was a new program, we were just delayed in launching it. So typically, it'll be, you know, either once a year or maybe, you know, every other year, depending on if we have a two-year funding cycle, but it, it typically won't be that close of a turnaround, so I do acknowledge that. But I, I, again, I had, you know, very strong contacts with the agencies. That technical assistance session was really aimed at, you know, addressing that. I had really good attendance. I don't have the list of all the agencies, but I think, you know, thirty to forty agencies attended that Zoom session, you know, to hear about the program and what, and what they needed to do. Um, they all have my contact information. I, I try to make myself, um, very available for any questions, you know, that they might have. And, um, so I, I, we understand that quick turnaround and again, these agencies are juggling a lot of different things, so we know that, you know, there can sometimes be a time crunch, but, um, we, we do provide as much support as possible and, um, make sure that if they have any questions, they have my phone number, they can just call me and, you know, um, and the agencies that were not recommended for funding, you know, it's, I, I, I extend the same offer to any agency, you know, um, there's a, there's that chance for a con- continued technical assistance, you know, for next year, if there are additional questions they might have about how to, you know, increase their chances or, you know, improve their application. I've, I've worked with many agencies, you know, kind of after the fact, to answer some of their questions about what their score was, how they can improve their score, you know, and so I've been able to build those relationships. And I always encourage any agency that maybe didn't receive their full funding or was not recommended for funding to reach out. And I'm happy to talk, I mean, I'm only one person, so I don't have too much time on my hands, but I'm always more than happy to, to meet and talk through the application with them and, um, find ways for, for the process to go maybe a little bit better the following year.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, and then I was wondering, I was trying to find the funding list from last year's, a few months ago selections. I didn't know if, um, you had a good place to find those or happen to remember, or I guess because my question is, what I'm really wondering is, what of these organizations did we just fund in the last years and which ones are new? And kind of thinking about increased equity and closing some gaps of funding and kind of institutional advantages? And, um, you know, I'd like to see this kind of diversely distributed amongst the community instead of to our same, like, go-to groups every time.
Yeah. Well, I think this, this list of recommendations is very strong, and I think it really does reflect that diversity and, and we're very proud of that. So I would say that's definitely a goal that we've achieved. From my memory, I believe there are three n- new agencies that we have not, that we did not fund last time, that were kind of new additions, that we were excited about their programs. For example, um, the, um, the, uh, Newcomer Immigrant Student Support Program, that was, that was a new, uh, we didn't fund them last time. So that was an exciting new program that we received an application for and we were excited to, to support. Housing Authority, you know, the Youth Build, that was another new one that, um, we, we did not fund last time, but we felt they had a very strong application. So, um, it really does depend on the applications we receive and, you know, how strong they are, you know, we have to weigh things fairly, but we're always more than happy to, um, you know, increase that diversity and really go out and find those grassroots agencies that are doing a lot of that work in the neighborhood. And, and we think this list does reflect that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to note, the Phil's reminded me that we're coming up against a ten-thirty deadline, and I went to make a motion to extend the meeting, but I guess before I do that, my question to the group is, there's a lot on this agenda. Are we gonna get through this in forty, in thirty minutes? Or is this, when we have to have another meeting tomorrow?
I think that we are, we have ha- have preemptively scheduled for tomorrow, but I think that we could probably get through the community development chunk of it.
I agree.
Um, in the next thirty minutes and then perhaps, um, recess for, for numbers sixteen till the end.
So that's what I was trying to figure out, which, should we, should we extend it to ten forty-five or eleven?
I would just go eleven, just to make sure we have the time.
Okay, all right, well, then I move that we extend our meeting until eleven.
Okay, second.
All in favor, uh, moved by Mary Alice to extend the meeting to eleven, seconded by Sharice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Was there any more questions for Brayden? Sharice?
I'd like to make a motion.
Um, well, I just have a question, sorry.
Just to get it on the table, and also I would not also like to make a motion to say, um, um, I'd like, uh, make, uh, all of these resolutions omnibus?
I do, I do have a question.
Okay, go on, I'm sorry.
I'll take, you want me to take the Chair, Shandra?
Yes, please, thank you.
Chair recognizes Shandra.
My bad, I'm sorry.
So, uh, Brayden, um, number eight on the scoring tool, it says the agency has previously received grant funding. So it has to be a prerequisite that they have received grant funding? Or what does strong performance track record mean if they have not received grant funding before?
So it's, it's not a prerequisite, it's one of many different criteria that we're looking at, and, and we do score it. Um, we just, in terms of financial management, you know, we, we do have a fiscal duty to make sure that they're able to manage funds appropriately. So we do look at, you know, and it doesn't have to be City of Urbana funding necessarily, but, you know, other community funds or grants, maybe state funds or, or things like that. We just want to see that they have some process for, you know, keeping receipts or if they're gonna be charging for payroll, do they have like a payroll system set up, you know, things like that? So, um, it's not a prerequisite, it's just one of the things that we are, we're looking at and considering along with all of those other factors that are on that list.
Okay, and then I just have some questions about like what some of these programs are actually gonna do.
Sure.
If you don't mind. Um, so like the Youth Assessment Center, is the program the restorative justice process?
So they do, they do screening and intake, and it's like a diversion program, so essentially to prevent youth from ending up at the courthouse, basically.
Right.
Um, so there's a lot of programming, and that's a program that is very strongly funded through City of Champagne, through the county, they, you know, their, their, their metrics are very good for the student, they're able to divert from the criminal justice system. And so we feel very strongly that it's important that we can, you know, if they applied and that it was important for us to, the City of Urbana, to contribute to, to that program because they really are working in the criminal justice system to make sure students, young kids, don't, you know, go any further down that road.
I just wonder, like, I just wondered what the, what the program was, but I guess if just as their general duties, okay, and then, um, for, was there, um, sort of like a, a baseline of how many kids needed to be served to? I didn't see that on the scoring tool, but was that?
Not necessarily. It kind of depends on what amount they're asking for, because we want to see that they're, you know, the ratio of, of cost per student is reasonable. So not necessarily, you know, it's just one of the factors we're looking at, you know, if they, uh, if there's a, seems to be a very high, you know, cost per student, you know, that might lead to some other questions, but it wouldn't rule them out necessarily. We'd just have to consider the other factors.
Okay. And then is the Urbana Park District Splash After School Program, is that the entire school year or, it, does Splash stand for something? I just thought of like the splash pad, I don't know.
It's an after-school program, um, and it's, it's their, it's their free, it's their program for students who can't afford, you know, the other programs the Park District has that are, that require payment, so, um, but it is run by Park, uh, District staff. And I do believe they have summer programming, but I, I, I think it's a primarily after-school, um, program.
And then the Community Study Center is year-round, and I see that they have, um, indicated they're gonna serve seventy-five to ninety students in that program. So why, I guess, what's the rationale for the seventeen thousand if they're gonna, um, nearly serve a hundred kids versus like the twenty-five thousand HVNT is going to get in for a three-month program?
So the, um, the, the UNCC program, you know, they, they pay, you know, they have tutors, there's a lot of, there's staffing costs, so that, that's factored into it. But, um, that's a very strong program that we felt had very strong community support and also a very strong track record of successfully, um, managing an after-school program and also their college prep, um, program, um, you know, had very strong metrics as well. Um, HVNT, uh, they're just a much smaller agency, which is why they're, that amount is a little bit lower, but that is to essentially operate their entire program, which, um, they bring in videographers, they pay for staff to come in and work with students, you know, um, so there's a lot of moving parts to that program. But, um, so they, they have expenses that are kind of year-round in order to prepare for that, in order to make sure it runs successfully. But, you know, we really felt passionate about that program as well because, you know, they're making a, we feel like they were making a big impact on the community.
Okay.
Specifically focusing on, on gun violence and, um, sort of education and, um, around, around that issue.
Okay, thanks.
Would you like the Chair back?
Sure.
I relinquish the Chair.
Okay, Sharice, you can make your motion now.
Ah, thank you. Okay, I would like to first make a motion to, um, make this omnibus, uh, the omnibus where and, and combine all of these resolutions. Okay, do I have to read them all? Okay, so. No wonder nobody else wanted to do this. Resolution number twenty-twenty-two zero-six zero-four-five R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub, subrecipient agreement with youth services agreement Champagne County Regional Planning Commission Youth Assessment Center. And resolution number twenty-twenty-two, number twenty-twenty-two zero-six zero-four-six R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Housing Authority of Champagne County Youth Build Program. And resolution twenty-twenty-two zero-six zero-seven, zero-four-seven R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Steam Genius DBA Hip Hop Express, Hip Hop Express. And resolution number twenty-twenty-two zero-six zero-four-eight R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, HV Neighborhood Trans- Transformation Neighborhood Voices. And resolution zero, resolution number twenty-twenty-two zero-six zero-four-nine R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, East Central, Central Illinois Refugee Mutual Assistance Center, Newcomer Immigrant Student Support. And resolution number twenty-twenty-two zero-six zero-five, five-zero R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Neighborhood Connections Community Study Center. And resolution number twenty-twenty-two zero-six zero-five-one R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Neighborhood Connections, Urbana Youth Development Program. And resolution twenty-twenty-two zero-six zero-five-two R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Park District Splash After School Program. And resolution number twenty-twenty-two zero-six zero-five-three R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, the Well Experienced Family Care Program into an omnibus, omnibus.
Second.
For consent agenda.
Okay, it's been, um, moved by Sharice and seconded by Mary Alice to omnibus fashion these resolutions that she read out. All those in favor?
Is there any discussion?
Oh, uh, yeah, sorry. Is there any discussion?
About the omnibus or the?
About the omnibus.
About the omnibus?
Well, can I, can I talk?
Well, we're, we're doing the omnibus vote first and then we'll come back and do the discussion part. Right, that's right? Okay.
I don't want to talk about the omnibus. But I, I, I want to talk.
Yes, okay, we're, we'll, we'll get there. All those in favor of the omnibus say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Now, is there any discussion?
Well, now we need the motion for that omnibus to go to council with approval. On a consent agenda.
Move for omnibus to go for approval to, for it, uh, city council. On, on a consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Sharice and seconded by James that the omnibus, um, bill will go on the consent agenda for, to the city council for approval. I'm sorry, it's late.
Resolution, you're gonna, no, it's confusing.
Okay, so is there any discussion? Chris?
I want to be careful how I say this. I am not criticizing the police and I am not criticizing anybody from community development, but we, I have to red flag this inadvertent, crazy, psychotic situation we have found ourselves in, in this moment. And what I mean by that is, we just got done approving three hundred thousand dollars between the school district and us for two cops. And now we've got eight organizations who would keep people out of jail and not have, make us not have any need for police, and they gotta split, eight organizations gotta split one hundred thousand dollars. And again, I'm not criticizing anybody and how this happened, but I just gotta note this, and this is what drove the entire country crazy and had that, had them, you know, the kids out of Minneapolis saying the hasty and irresponsible phrase, "defund the police" for moments like this. Look at our priorities. And they got half the equation right, which was fund the community. And we're not. You know, we are given, I, my point is, these, you know, the, the financials on this are crumbs, you know, paltry amounts, it's barely enough for a, I mean, we, I'm, I'm not gonna be patting myself on the back for voting for this, which I will, but this is crazy. This isn't, our priorities look twisted. It really, in my, my opinion, and again, community development, I apologize, you're doing fine, and the police, and I, you know, I want Michelle and Chad to have three hundred thousand dollars, but where is our? But where is our commitment? Why can't this be three million dollars for these eight organizations? They're going to do great things. This is the stuff that we need to invest in. So that's my point and thanks for listening.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, Mayor Marley?
I would remind folks that you will have ten, approximately ten million dollars to allocate to, um, organizations, these, perhaps these organizations and organizations like them, plus another three million in home ARP funds that go countywide. So there's thirteen million dollars that can fund priorities. So this is, this is one piece of the puzzle and, um, it's, it's, it's a good down payment. So you, I just want the public to know, there's millions of dollars yet to be allocated in the next few months.
Grace?
Thank you. Um, I definitely, definitely hear, um, you know, the sentiment there of Chris talking about, you know, just looking at how much we're funding for different things and that that's a big thing to put our, put our money where our mouths are. I think that it is important to support these youth services grants. I think that I look forward to it being even a better process as we go on. I know this is just the second year we've done this, right? So I think as, uh, oh, it's not? Okay.
Now, these social service grants have been going on for many, many years.
This youth services one is new.
Well, they focus on youth services now, but, um, in the past, but this process has been actually refined over the years. It's probably the best it's ever been.
Okay. And I look forward to how we can improve it even more with a longer application period. Um, I appreciate that you guys did the workshop for applicants, but it seems like there's still a little more that can be done, um, for making sure that members of the public who want to apply have the information and resources to do so. And, yeah, I think that we can do even more with some of this funding. I think this is a good start and important things to fund and to where to put our money. And I look forward to having even more expanded and maybe even more comprehensive future process.
Yeah? Oh, Mary Alice?
So, um, just to give a quick background, I mean, we, this process has evolved over time and and funding sources have changed. We started off with, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and then that was when we combined Cunningham Township and city funds so that we would have one social service funding. It's called the Consolidated Social Service Funding. We went through and we had priorities which came to city council and we funded different kinds of things such as, um, healthcare and, um, access for senior citizens and so forth. So we had different priorities every single funding year. What has happened is is that over the past two years, the the funding has been split between Cunningham Township and the city. And the city has said, we want to focus, we want to emphasize on on one key group. And we can split this money lots of different ways, right? There's lots of very well-needed groups within our community. And I think that, in my opinion, focusing on on the youth in these past two years has been the right direction for our community. It's been challenging for everybody. I'm not going to lie, everybody's had a hard time in the past two years and everybody is deserving of some support. But as we've been talking about today with the with the SRO program, things have been really hard on the kids and we're trying to get them back on track. And that's what I feel like these different programs that we're all talking about right now will help some of those youth. So there, it's it's hard. I'll I'll let you know, so like one year, I think there was forty-five applications. It's very hard to go through all these and to consistently apply things. You can have all kinds of criteria. You can have, well, how many people are they serving? How much time are they spending with each person? Well, the fact of the matter is, is that sometimes you need a lot more intense time with somebody than the raw numbers of people that you can help. And so you have to balance all those things as you look at these social service agencies. I think that, I think I agree with the mayor that the process has gotten better. I've been on this committee for the past five years and it's been an evolution. And in the beginning, when we had forty-five applications, we had meeting after meeting after meeting, trying to get on the same page. We've got it down now to just a couple of meetings because we have a good process in place. COVID, like everything else, threw everything else out. And what happened with the social service funding is is that when we opened up social service funding, which is usually in February, well, guess what? In March, everybody was sent home. So all those applications that we had opened up, all of a sudden, we said, wait a second, everything's going to change, everything's up in the air. We're going to have to, we're going to reach out to those groups that had applied and said, well, how are your services being impacted by COVID? So that we can get you the right kind of funding because some services shut down. So it has been a little off-kilter because of that process. Um, and that's one of the reasons why we're trying to catch up. We're getting there. Next year, I'm hoping we'll be at least on a better cadence in terms of when we open up the applications, how long we review it and and so forth. So I I think that, um, just like with any other process, things can improve. I think we've come a long way in this process here. I I feel like we have a good diverse group of services that we're supporting with the youth, which was our original intention. And so I'm in support of of all of these groups. I just wanted to share that insight with everyone.
Yeah?
So just have a few thoughts related to this discussion. I I think that context is important, right? That there's been a major shift so that even though having funding coming from the city is not new, that split, where it's not the Consolidated Social Service Funding, is different, that is new. And I I think it is important to recognize that, that the staff has been, oops, sorry, evolving, you know, through this process during the pandemic. So is that a relatively short timeframe? Yes, but that's not the shortest timeframe I've ever seen for a grant application for social service funding. So I I hear that. I think it's great to know that the city is moving towards giving folks more time. But having things like the TA, the technical assistance, that makes a world of a difference. So as someone who has previously written for the Consolidated Social Service Funding, um, I just wanted to say, like, the process can be complicated. But I also want to highlight that funding the same programs multiple years in a row is not inherently a bad thing, right? As Mary Alice said, all of our local service providers are also struggling with the impact of the pandemic, are also struggling to figure out, how do we keep our doors open? How do we increase staff salaries as inflation is happening? How do we continue to serve people with extra COVID precautions? And if they continue to perform and meet the targets that that we have for them as a city, that continuity, you know, places like Urbana Neighborhood Community Connection Center, which I probably just said wrong, but you know what I'm trying to say, um, has been serving Urbana for ages, right? And so like, I I just want to put that out there of like, yes, we should always be open to new applications, but if we're continuing to fund good organizations because they're doing good work based on our current funding priorities, I just wanted to put a note of caution that I don't think that's something that should ever be held against an organization just because they've been doing the work well for a long time. I think that it's, I appreciate seeing some some new, you know, organizations in here too. To me, again, that is reflective of using a criteria, looking at what are the funding priorities right now and having that focus on youth, I think it is going to change what organizations are funded. That being said, Chris raises an important point, right? Yes, we have the ARPA money, we have an incredible opportunity to invest in our community in the short term, right? But I do think it's worth us thinking about what is the long-term commitment that this city is going to make to the organizations that are doing that on-the-ground work as well as investing in programs like the SROs, if that's the direction we continue to go. That it shouldn't be an either-or. There there should be that intentionality to make sure that we are, like Chris said, living our values and maybe having an additional member of the development team will help with that because, again, one person can only do so much. So those are just a few things that came to mind for me, but I'm I'm excited to see this funding going out into the community. I think that these are really worthy recipients of this funding.
Mayor? I'll be quick, but just to provide a little more context, and also I want to thank the, um, committee for the very professional and consistent approach you've taken. So just to give you some historical information, when I first arrived on the city council, we were seated in May. The first thing that happened is I was handed a stack, literally a stack of paper, a foot and a half high, forty-some applications. Each council member was given the applications. We had no criteria, no, no consistent way of evaluating anything. We were told to rank them in our our preferences. And then one council member was given the sad task, and usually it was Eric Jacobson, if I remember, of trying to compile all the individual votes from the council to come up with recommendations. So it was incredibly frustrating for everybody involved. And I just want to, and one of my goals as as a city was to professionalize this entire process, and I think we have. So I want to thank, um, C.D., Sheila Brayden, Mary Alice, and all of those who have helped do this. And you will never, ever get a stack of paper eighteen inches tall. It was a nightmare.
Sorry, Chris. One more quick one. I forgot what I wanted to say before, um, which I definitely appreciate all of that insight and I appreciate that we didn't get a giant stack like that, um, to just have a free-for-all with. I feel like I I would like something in between. I I am interested in more information than it's in here, but less than that scenario on like the scoring for each applicant and why. And I imagine that some of that maybe, you know, wouldn't be appropriate to make public, but if we could share with council or, um, I just, you know, share publicly at least that I'm really interested in this and, you know, I'd be interested in serving on the committee possibly or at least having that kind of inside knowledge from it because I feel like it's, this is something that I would like to know more of the specifics on, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Any further discussion? Okay, um, if it's the, we can just voice vote, right? Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Omnibus passes on the consent agenda to city council. And given the late hour, we will recess until six, seven? Six thirty tomorrow, same chairs and lighting. Good night. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order, continuation of Monday, June sixth council meeting. Will the clerk please call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti? Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken? Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marley?
Here.
Okay, um, we left off on resolution number twenty twenty-six dash zero six dash zero five four R. A resolution of the City of Urbana in support of tax increment financing.
Hello again. I was ready last night, I jumped right up. As you adjourned, I was catching up, so. Tonight, I'm bringing you a resolution. This would just be a resolution in general support of TIF as an economic development tool. The Illinois Municipal League, to which Urbana belongs, has asked, um, member communities to pass resolutions in support of TIF as an economic development tool. And this is just something they would use when lobbying, um, attacks on TIF because there have been some legislators who are working to stop the use of TIF or change it in unfavorable ways. TIF has been a great tool for Urbana. It's helped with our small business grants, everything from Regs, Reg cakes to Beard Culture. We've done redevelopment incentive programs to help businesses expand like Bunnies did during COVID. And then, of course, it helps with big projects like Two Hundred Vine and Hotel Royer. So we've used, um, TIF very well. We still have three TIF districts in place. And so, um, this is something we were just bringing to you to consider, to see if you would like to pass a resolution in general support of TIF so that we could, um, share that with the municipal league. And I'm guessing they would just use it to share, like, you know, nine, a hundred percent of our members have passed resolutions in support of TIF.
Are there any questioning, questions for Steph? Go ahead, Mary Alice.
I'm sure it's here and I just haven't seen it. Approximately, do TIFs last thirty years? Is that right?
I think they're twenty-one years and they could be extended for an additional fourteen. But, and that's even changing a lot because in legislation, we see, um, changes come through all the time that, uh, used to you could only extend it once, some are be extended long, are being extended longer. So things are changing all the time, up and down. But my recollection is twenty-one years initial, fourteen-year extension.
So for the Two Hundred Vine Street project, um, we bought that land and then cleared most of it except for the Goodyear Building, is that right?
Yes.
And we used the TIF funds to to be able to purchase that land and clear it?
Uh, I would have to go back and look at that. We do have a redevelopment agreement with, um, Sub Four that we will, uh, they've just turned in receipts to me this last month that I'll be reviewing that would be part of a tax abatement back to them for reimbursable costs.
Because TIF is supposed to help with incentivizing businesses, but also taking care of blight. And I think that was a prime example of using TIF funds for that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, James?
I I guess I'm going to ask if, um, if this is specifically necessary. And the reason why I'm asking that is, i- is there a particular piece of legislation that this is being requested to thwart? Or is there a particular attack that, um, IML is is trying to manage at this point in time?
Uh, there have, there have been very specific attacks. Some legislators from up in the northwest suburbs, I know, have made, um, targeted, trying to get TIFs to end or, um, to make specific changes to them. We talked a little bit about it at the TIF conference this year. The mayor and I receive updates from, uh, TIF, the Tax Increment Association, to which we belong, and from the IML as changes are made. So TIF is controversial because, you know, it diverts the property taxes to the city to use, and that's the city's right when TIF is created to use for development, to hopefully raise up the EAV for everyone when TIF goes away. So, um, interestingly enough, you know, some of those people are fighting TIF while they're also extending TIFs up in their region. So there's, um, some controversial things happening also with that. But, yeah, there has been, um, some more aggressive, uh, work to shut down TIFs.
Mayor?
I would add, um, yes, this has come with those specific requests from Brad Cole after the particular experience in the General Assembly this spring and the legislation that was proposed in the north suburbs. So they, IML just, um, believes, has always been a staunch advocate of at least having this as a tool, a basic tool, and they believe that it would be helpful, as as Steph said, to to just have some, um, resolutions from communities around the state in support of this to use when they're lobbying to protect TIF. So this did come, um, especially after the spring and the experience they had there.
And I'd be glad to share, share with you some of the information they sent us if you'd like.
Sharice?
So I guess my my question on the back of that is, um, so there are state legislators that are trying to get rid of TIF? Or just in a particular area or?
Well, different people at different times, but lately, there's been more aggressive, attacks or opponents of TIF from the north suburbs, um, who have been working to get, get rid of it or change the laws, so.
And and this spring's case was, and and a lot of times, it stems from a legislator's, some problem in their specific district that they want to fix by by attacking TIF, but the legislation would affect everybody in the state. So that's what IML has to deal with. They they are lobbying on behalf of all of the communities, smaller communities all over the state like ours. And, um, just to protect this as a tool, that's why this resolution, it's it's very, it's short, it's it's not specific, but it's just worded as a general resolution of support, which is something that they can have with them when they go to to fight, to maintain this.
Okay, if there are no more questions for Steph, I entertain a motion. Sharice?
I'll make the motion to, um, move to the city council for approval, the resolution number twenty twenty-two dash, uh, zero six dash zero five four R. Resolution of the City of Urbana in support of tax increment financing.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Sharice and seconded by, um, Mary Alice. Is there any further discussion? James?
Yeah, I'm I'm going to share with my colleagues here that I, I don't want to vote no on this because I think TIF is, can be, an effective tool. I I don't agree with the language in the resolution. I think it's too strong. It implies that TIF is a panacea in my mind, the way the language is written, and it's not always, it's not always maybe the best approach in a particular circumstance. So I intend to vote present on this. So, I intend to vote present on this.
Any further discussion? No, seeing none, um, will the clerk call the row? Or, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any other? Okay, and James is present. All right, well, that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Resolution number two zero-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-five-five-R, a resolution approving a revision to the Enterprise Zone Intergovernmental Agreement between City of Urbana, Illinois, and Champaign County, Illinois.
And this resolution I'm bringing for your consideration is really just to clean up some language that's written into our intergovernmental agreement. State legislature for enterprise zones requires us to meet once a year, which we do meet. The Enterprise Zone Advisory Board meets every year, the same time the TIF Joint Review Board meets. The language in our intergovernmental agreement, what the county says we'll meet twice a year, and the past three years, that hasn't happened. So, we were kind of out of compliance for our own intergovernmental agreement. And it mainly didn't happen because there was no reason to meet. You know, so we didn't have an agenda, we didn't have any pressing issues to have a second meeting. So, I'm just requesting that this change be made to change the wording to be once a year. And then, of course, if we do have an issue or a topic we need to discuss, we can always schedule a second or even a third and fourth advisory meeting. We just wouldn't be required to per this, per this intergovernmental agreement. And we did talk to the county about it. They've passed a resolution to allow that change for once a year. So, that's ideally what we would like to do. If this didn't pass, I would schedule a meeting, I would notice a meeting, and if we had no agenda items, I would cancel the meeting. So, this way, we would be in compliance with what our agreement says we would be doing.
Are there any questions? Seems pretty straightforward. Yes, James?
Yeah, I guess, I'm looking, I, I support this change, I think it makes sense. I, I just wanted to ask, because of the way the language is written, shall convene one meeting annually, the, should the, should the language be one or more meetings? Because shall says you should have one. I don't see in here how we have additional ones if we need them.
It, it wouldn't be, we would just be required to have the one, and then, obviously, if the, if the advisory board needed to meet, or we had an issue to bring to them, we would be at, at our will to schedule.
So, is there other parts of the agreement that says you can have a meeting if you feel like you need one?
No.
Okay.
No, we could add something like that.
I'm just curious about the, the, the language there, because it says shall, as opposed to?
Required?
Yeah, oh, yeah, may, yeah.
We, we could change it to may, I would need to go back to the county, too.
I would say one, one or more.
Yeah. Shall have one or more.
Shall have one or more.
I'm sorry that the county has already passed this.
That's okay.
And maybe, maybe it doesn't matter, but.
So, if the wording said shall have one or more meetings per year, annually, one or more meetings annually?
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Charisse?
That's all right. Because we're all looking at the language. Maybe what I'm thinking is in terms of just, by saying a meeting shall be noticed and convened once, guarantees that they will meet at least, they are required to meet at least once a year. I don't know if you want to say shall meet once or more, because then that also implies that they have to meet more than once a year, unless you want to say they may meet once or more a year, instead of shall.
One example is the TIF Joint Review Board has, is required to meet annually. We are having an additional meeting this year because of this TIF amendment we're working on. So, there will be another meeting, and the Joint Review Board members understand that we would, if we had a reason to bring them together, we would notice and invite them to come together to discuss and issue.
Okay. Well, maybe it does not need to be changed. I just was curious if there was, if we were locking ourselves in in any way.
Charisse? Oh.
That's okay.
See, now I'm paying too much attention. Is there any further discussion or questions for Stephanie? If not, I will entertain a motion? Do we have the motion? No, we, no.
I would make the motion if somebody would loan me their agenda. I, I left, I'm sorry.
I, I can make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I would move Resolution number, there's so many of them, twenty twenty-two dash zero-six dash five-zero-five-five-R, a resolution approving a revision to the Enterprise Zone Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Urbana, Illinois, and Champaign County, Illinois.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by James and seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any further, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. Next item is Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero-six dash zero-five-six-R, a supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for West Windsor Road resurfacing.
Good evening, council, again. I'm standing in for John Zeeman tonight. He had something he couldn't miss tonight, so he couldn't be back here. But, uh, he briefed me well, so we are good to go. This is the West Windsor Resurfacing Project. It was in our CIP this year. We passed a previous resolution for up to one point four million dollars to cover the design and construction, and construction engineering for this. Through design, the, the original budget was based on a two-inch millinfill, and the primary change for this is, through design, we did pavement cores, and it was decided that it was better for us to perform a two-and-a-half-inch millinfill in this, to provide more structural integrity for the road and prevent having thin, thin layers of wear in between the new surface and the existing surface. That was the primary change for the additional cost for this. This is reflected in our twenty twenty-two CIP, which will encumber funds in FY twenty-three. The idea for this supplemental resolution of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars is to cover the additional construction costs from our bids that we opened in May. And this essentially appropriates those funds, and it's, because it's state motor fuel tax funds, we have to sign off on it first and then get their blessing before we can spend that money. So, we have to appropriate additional three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to cover the additional construction costs for this, related to that. It's about a twenty-five percent increase in thickness for the roadway resurfacing.
Mary Alice?
Windsor has been a thorn in a lot of people's sides. How long, if we increase the, the thickness of this, how many years longevity will that add?
It's, it's hard to say with a resurfacing project. Typically, what we're targeting with a resurfacing effort is a fifteen-to-twenty-year life expectancy. The half-inch is more of a stability thing related to the actual construction. So, when we perform pavement cores, I think Windsor's about a fifteen-inch-thick pavement right now, and it's built in lifts. And what they found during that, that pavement cores was a number of them displayed distress beyond two inches. So, the idea was we needed to take more off to really get the same result. The idea would be is if, if we don't get all of the distress out of the surface, that cracking that is present in that last half-inch could continue to project, and then create the same issues that we already see out there.
Thank you.
Could you please define for me millinfill? I have no idea what that is.
Milling, the milling process is essentially, it's like a big grinder that comes and chews up the top surface of the roadway, and it creates, creates what they call asphalt millings. And a lot of that gets recycled back into asphalt nowadays. Fill would then be a hot mix asphalt overlay. So, once they take that two-and-a-half inches off, they're gonna come back with new asphalt of the same thickness and repave that same thickness back.
Is, is that the, already the materials that are, that is on the, on Windsor as it is, or?
The, although.
Is this a different material?
It'll be new material. The way mixed designs are set up now, typically, they're set up with a maximum amount of recycle that can be reused. We don't usually recycle the exact stuff that's there. It's gonna go to a stockpile for reuse later. But, the asphalt milling plants have those recycled stockpiles as well that they're mixing in. So, it's not the exact material, but in a roundabout way, eventually, it could be.
So, I, and I guess another question is, we're not using the same people that we used before to, with the other Windsor?
That's, that's a different section. This section is from Race Street to the west boundary. I think the section you're referring to is, is Race Street to the east. And that section, currently, we are not working with that contractor, because we're in litigation with them.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna be, uh?
The, the, the low bidder was Open Road Paving Company. The only two bidders that we received were Open Road Paving and Cross Construction.
Okay. And, um, so the, the company that's going to be doing this is?
Open Road Paving.
Open Road Paving?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, okay, just wanted to.
James?
This is currently an asphalt service?
Correct.
As opposed to that other area is concrete?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any, Mary Alice?
I'd make a motion.
Please.
All right, I move that we send Resolution number twenty twenty-two zero-six zero-five-six-R, Supplement Resolution for Improvement Under the Illinois Highway Code, State Motor Fuel Tax for West Windsor Road Resurfacing on the Consent Agenda to City Council for Approval.
Second.
Okay, was moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Charisse to City Council on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, next item on the agenda is Ordinance number two zero-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-two-one, and Ordinance Amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash four-three, Increasing the, Increasing Number of Class GH Liquor Licenses for Martin Place Incorporated Doing Business as Martin Place, Inc. at eighteen oh four North Cunningham Avenue, Urbana, Illinois.
Yes, this is an application for a gaming hall liquor license for Martin's Place. And this, the owner is Martin Fuentes, who has been a longtime owner of Toro Loco in Urbana, sold that business, and he would like to open a gaming hall. And, of course, under our city code, each gaming hall liquor license application comes to the council for approval. We currently have a total of twenty establishments in Urbana with video gaming machines. Ten of these are bars, restaurants, or veterans organizations like the American Legion. Ten of them are the standalone gaming halls. Per state law, every gaming hall must have a liquor license, and this would be to serve alcohol by the drink or in the original package. They may have up to six gaming terminals in each establishment. People have to be twenty-one years of age or older to go into these. So, this would increase the number of gaming hall licenses from nine to ten. This, um, this establishment would be located on North Cunningham, kind of across from Eastland Suites, the Circle K that's up there. So, it's on the east side of Cunningham Avenue. And as is our practice, each time there's a application for a new gaming hall, we reach out to, we have, we connect the councilperson representing that area. We connect them with the applicant, and to make sure that they have at least had a chance to talk with the city council member representing that area. In this case, it was Chandra. So, everything's in order, and if he is approved for this license, then he'll proceed with working through the rest of the process at the state level in order to get the, uh, proper licenses from the state. So, we recommend that the council approve this.
Mary Alice?
Well, we've had this conversation in the past in terms of the distribution, the geographic distribution of gaming halls. I, I know that there is one already on Cunningham, over there, where the old, uh, I, I don't know exactly, the old, is the soccer place still there? No, the soccer world, this is not there.
Dollar General in that strip.
Yeah, so I, I guess my question is, how many gaming facilities, operations do we have in that area? That area is loosely defined, but we'll just call it the Cunningham Corridor.
Uh, that, I don't have a map of. I know we have a total of ten in the whole city. So, they're, they tend to be located on the major arterials like Cunningham University, North Lincoln. We do have one at Sunny Crest, so.
Yes, Charisse?
How many are north of University Avenue?
I, um, I think, if I may speak, I think it's, um, the one that you had mentioned, Mary Alice, and that's it.
North of University Avenue?
University, like, past five points up, I think.
I'm just talking period in that area, because I can name, I know there's Urbana Gardens, there's Lucky's, there's another one.
That's not.
No, I'm just, I'm just talking about, just, I'm thinking about my ward. And within my ward, there at least, and then there's, wait, one on University Avenue in Race. I can't think of the name of that. There's the other one that's in the Cunningham, um, area where Tricochi and all that, where that is. That's, that's just five that I can remember right now. And, um, so, that's.
In that Cunningham, I thought you were talking about in that Cunningham corridor.
Well, even in that Cunningham corridor, there's an, there's one, there's a, I think it's a Lacy's or, or something like that, that's in, over there where Tricochi is. I don't know if it's, I can't remember, or Hot Spot or something like that, that's over there. And, um, and there's a Ruby's somebo, somewhere close by, too, one of those. There are, I'm just saying, the location is that I would say nine out of the ten are located on the north side of Urbana. I'd almost bet a Clark bar on it.
Mary Alice?
So, my suggestion is if, if it would be possible to give us a map with the locations of the licenses, and we move this forward with no recommendation to City Council, that would, that to me would be appropriate.
Do you want all twenty locations with video gaming terminals, or the ten gaming halls?
I'd like all of them myself. I have it somewhere from two years ago, but I don't know if it really is.
I guess all of them, if that's possible.
All twenty?
Yep.
Okay.
With that, I'll, I'll make a motion that we move to City Council with no recommendation. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two zero-six zero-two-one, Ordinance Amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three hyphen forty-three, Increasing Number of Class GH Liquor Licenses for Martin Place Incorporated, otherwise known as Martin Place Incorporated, at eighteen oh four North Cunningham Avenue in Urbana.
Is there a second? Doesn't seem like we have a second. So, that motion falls?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned that this move on to City Council with no recommendation by Mary Alice and seconded by Chris. Um, any discussion? Charisse?
Did you get to talk to? Um, did you get to talk to the owner?
I did, yes.
Can you give me an idea of what he's talking about?
Um, I think he wanted a few gaming terminals with the option to serve beverages. I, I was hesitant as well because, you know, gaming, but on that end of town, there's, I'm thinking like the expressway area and like down rent, like the, the toy rent two area, there's nothing really there. So, like, there's like no schools down, down that way. There's, you know, some, some housing, of course, I lived down that area. But I didn't think that it would be, have such a, like a detrimental impact to the area. I would, I could see like people who are on the highway stopping for gas, stopping in there or something. And also, he's a longtime business owner in the community. He mentioned that he sort of wants to retire and so doing a, a gaming business or a, a gaming hall would sort of be a little less low-key than Toro Loco, so, um, yeah.
Just for new members of the council too, our zoning ordinance also has restrictions on where these, these establishments can be located. So, they have to be a certain distance from churches, schools, and some other, other types of institutions. So, that limits where they can be located as well. You don't get to plop them down in just any neighborhood. You have to be, you have to follow the, they have to conform with our ordinances as well. I believe Eastland Suites, let me check my list. Yeah, Eastland Suites has them.
Hall gaming.
Which is game, video gaming terminals, yes. So, up in that location, it's a couple of, two or three buildings north of Hickory River, and there's a series of restaurants, gas stations. It's a combination, that corridor. Hotels.
Sharice?
So, so this is, this will, this gaming hall will be located coming, is it north of 74 or south of 74?
South of 74, just shortly after you get off the interstate.
So, do you know where the Shell gas station is? It'll be right, um, south of the, like right next door to it.
Do you know where Canyon Road?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's, it's, it's just off Canyon Road. Only east of, on the east side of Cunningham.
Okay.
And again, they can have up to six terminals in each location. Also, for, for the newer council members, we also, in our ordinance, we require that every establishment that has gaming terminals also has to have signage in the terminal that, and like, with language to the effects of listing the symptoms of gambling addictions and phone numbers of where you can get assistance or help. Mary Alice?
Chandra.
Oh, oh, sorry. Fall into old habits.
Oh, sorry.
I just pulled up Google Maps. So, right now on that corridor, there is Lacy's Place, which is on Race, I know, Ruby's Slots, and Lucky Luke's. And then there are one, two, three, four, five places north of Lincoln, on, uh, North Lincoln. So, anyway, I, I don't know how accurate Google Maps is in terms of our liquor licenses, but that's just a quick.
And they tend to be, and that's also on the major arterials and near the interstates. That's just where they tend to locate, so.
James?
Yeah, I was going to add, there are two at Sunny Crest, one in Sunny Crest and one where Family Video used to be.
Okay.
And Lucky Luke's, for those who want to know, is in the strip mall just south of Perkins Road off of Cunningham. So, it's also in the, in the general area that this one would be in.
Is, is there any further discussion? Let the worker reflect, which Councilmember Colacetti has joined us. It's an ordinance, so we'll have to voice vote, correct? Okay. So, we'll, the clerk, Callaroe, and we're moving this to council with no recommendation.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. And next item is council input and communications. Does, anyone? Yes, James?
Yeah, I do want to, it seems like this is a short meeting, given what we thought we were going to be facing today. But I do want to thank everyone for the conversation last night, particularly since it lasted for five hours. I, I did think that was a, a good opportunity to dig into what is a challenging issue for some. And, and I did appreciate the community engagement in coming out, and particularly folks who are most affected by it, the students at the high school coming out and sharing, sharing with us. I also wanted to both explain my vote and ask for maybe future explanations for my colleagues' votes with regard to the approval of appointments. I do respect the desire to have individual votes on appointments. I come at appointments from the mayor, from the perspective of the mayor has chosen this person to do the work for, for the city. And if I'm going to approve it, I don't need to explain that, so I do not explain my yes votes. But I do, I would appreciate an explanation in those circumstances for no votes. I think it's, it's a little bit uncomfortable for me that, particularly with the appointment of the attorney, which I do understand that some individuals have not been satisfied with, that we had three votes against that appointment and no discussion about those three votes. Because three is a troubling number in a body of seven, because it's, it has a potential of indicating that three people agreed to block something but didn't talk about it in front of the public, which is required. Two people can agree and talk to, about things, but if you involve more than three people, three or more people, that's conducting business outside. I'm not saying anybody did that. I'm more concerned about the perception when you have a vote that has no explanation of, of the vote, particularly when it is against an appointment of a sitting person who's been doing the job. So, thank you.
Chris?
Um, yeah, um, I mean, James, I've been, I've been having some conversations about the whole reappointment process. And again, almost like a continuation of the conversation last year. I, I'm not comfortable with the way that becomes these public hires and fires without any process. It's all of a sudden, and maybe that was my fault for letting two weeks lapse before we came to that vote, so, and I should have. I would prefer, I'm, I've been just thinking out loud here, I, I would like a process where if I've got a problem with a, an employee, can I go to remediation, private remediation? These are personnel not matters. Why aren't we doing some of this in closed session? I'm, and I'm just speaking about, could I approach someone who I'm having problems with that I could work it out before it ever comes to a vote? You know what I'm saying? So, that's one idea to address that. Mayor, did you want to jump in here?
I'll take my turn.
Okay, all right. So, so that's something I'm thinking about, and hopefully we can talk about that more. I do want to talk about the May 24th mixer with the, uh, the projects and the women-owned businesses and minority-owned businesses. I want to thank again all the folks, Carol Mitten and Carla Boyd, Community Development. Mayor, you were there, I mean, all the people that put that together, Head Start and, and a good attendance. Our Equity Officer did give a presentation on CDAP at this meeting. You saw it last night, one of the contractors asking again, what is the city of Urbana's policy? Have you adapt, adopted CDAP? Are we sending, setting percentage goals, the aspirational goals? And is it in the bid documents? And I, and I apologize for being so repetitive and annoying, but I, I just, I think on behalf of the minority contractors and the women-owned contractors, which there were, by the way, at the mixer, many, several women-owned contractors, I was, didn't know that existed. But anyway, I think, you know, some clarity on what our policies, do we need to vote on something? Do we need to, I mean, what do we need to do to really establish, hey, this is our policy? And, and so, and I'm sure, you know, we're all on the same page trying to get that done or get that clarified. So, I appreciate that. Again, I echo James, we had a great meeting last night in terms of turnout and the students and the, all that. It was really appreciative that they gave input. Thanks.
Any other council input? Jia?
I want to apologize for being late. My schedule is different on Tuesday nights, and I think the more advanced notice we have for when there are going to be additional meetings or meetings on days other than Monday, it's definitely appreciated. I'm glad to know that we had advanced notice for the change for Juneteenth, so I can, can be here on that Tuesday. So, I appreciate that advanced notice for that. I also would like to thank the community, the students, the staff, everyone who was involved in the, the process for the SRO conversation last night, because I think that was a really important conversation for us to have, and specifically to hear about how it is working locally. As I, I shared earlier or yesterday, I think having those conversations, having information with advanced notice is really important in terms of those contexts as well, because I think we heard a lot of stress that was caused around the uncertainty. So, again, if, if we can have some of those conversations, have that information upfront, I'm hoping that future conversations regarding the SRO program will not, not cause so much stress for our community. But again, was really appreciative, especially of the school district, making sure we had that information available to us. I also think that it was important to separate out the reappointment process. I think that if there is ever a concern with, with anyone who's up for appointment or reappointment, that it shouldn't be, I, you know, a burden that's put on all staff. I understand that it is stressful regardless, being in an appointed position and, and having that uncertainty. But if there is a concern, I think it's important that it is addressed at an individual level, not putting an aggregate of everyone together. I do want to say though, I had some concerns in terms of how it was framed, James, by, with your, your comment about the vote regarding the attorney, even though I also voted to reappoint. I think we need to be really careful about what kind of message that can send, because I think it's suggested, and I, I think you were careful in some ways. But some of us have already been accused of colluding or collab, you know, making decisions behind the scenes, and that is not happening. And I think it's really important for our community to know that, that we are independent individuals who represent our wards, right? And have the best interest for the whole city in mind. And so, as folks are making these decisions, not to lump people together or assume that people are doing things in an unethical way, which again, I'm not suggesting that's what you've said, but I think that's what, how it could be heard. And so, I just wanted to state that I take objection, even though I was not one of the no votes, to, to the way that was raised, because I don't think that was something with the folks who voted no, who were like planning or, you know, going behind, having conversations that should happen publicly.
Mayor?
I'd like to address the reappointment or appointment process. First of all, it is not a hiring or firing process at City Council. That is not your job. Per your request and the ordinance, the code changes that we made last year, all the appoint, reappointees were sent out to council two weeks in advance. I believe I included with the message, if you have any questions or concerns, please contact me. I heard from no one in the two weeks prior to the meeting last night. And of course, if you have questions or concerns, or you're, don't understand why somebody's doing something, or you're not happy with something, yes, reach out, call me, make an appointment to see that individual, but do it in private. Don't do it in public at a council meeting where you catch everyone, you know, where you're blindsiding someone. There's, there's no barriers between you reaching out, making an appointment to see a staff member. And I'm not sure what the basis for your, the people who voted no on specific individuals are, but I will be calling you to, to hear your concerns. I want to understand your vote. And if it's serious enough for you to vote no on that appointment, then it's serious enough for me to understand why. Because the, the, when you vote no on these appointments in the way that it happened with absolutely no understanding of why, the message it sends to these individuals and to the entire staff is that you're ready to terminate their employment. Four votes would terminate is basically saying, we're terminating your employment. So, if you talk about uncertainty and damaging morale, that's what does it. And the other thing is, these kinds of processes that, the way that unfolded last night, we're, we're on the verge of starting searches for chiefs, a chief of police and a community development director. People who apply for jobs in Urbana watch our meetings. At that level, they watch our meetings, they talk to employees. And the message that was sent last night is that this is not necessarily a welcoming or supportive place to work. And I don't know how many people, when we start the search, will actually see that meeting, but I can guarantee to you, there will be some, and I'm not sure what the impact will be. But the message here is, don't wait until the meeting. Reach out. People are accessible. They want to help you understand why they do what they do. There's a whole lot more that goes on every day from morning to night here that, that you don't see. But if you want to understand why decisions are made or why actions are taken, yes, please, we're happy to talk with you. The damage, I mean, it's, it's damaging. This is actually very damaging. And even though you're, there, I'm going to go one, one more second. Even though ultimately everything was approved, that no vote sent a message to every single employee in Urbana, again.
Mary Alice?
So, since we're on the, the topic of appointments, I guess this is what I will say. In my opinion, if, if an employee does something that you don't agree with, I think it's best to either address their supervisor or the employee directly, reach out to them. I don't want any appointment process to be a surprise. Last night was a surprise. And I think it's, it's wrong for us to, to give an employee right here in 30 seconds a surprise. So, I guess what I'd ask my fellow council members, and I've done it before, I've, I've called up and I've had a concern or I didn't understand why something was done some way, and so far, everybody's been really willing to talk with me. So, if you do have something that comes up, you don't understand why something's done, I say, reach out to that person and at least hear from them what their rationale is for, for that. So, I would like to see the next appointment process that we do for there to be no surprises.
Is there any, Sharice?
Okay, I'm going to piggyback and kind of say something too. Um, I made it my business to talk to Carol about issues that I had. And I, because I, I will not make, make it so that it's a lot of drama here in the, in the council room regarding those particular things. And that's how I've handled the reappointment process, period. If I have an issue, I know enough of the people in this building that, that are, were on that list, that I would feel quite comfortable going to them and- on that list, that I would feel quite comfortable going to them and telling them and talking to them, and they know me. They know me. So I would suggest that in the future, make your, come around and talk to people and get to know them. Go out and have a drink with them, cup of coffee, just a conversation with a coke in the office makes a huge difference in what you know of that person's responsibilities, what they have, what they're required to do, what, what kind of responsibilities fall on their shoulders to keep this city going. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, I think everyone's given input. There's no discussion item, so with no further business, we'll adjourn.